I would like to call the meeting of the Board of Trustees on Tuesday, May 30th. The closed Senate session agenda. Roll call, please, Madam Secretary. Virginia Baxter.
Here.
Jeff Kellogg.
Here.
Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Doug Otto.
Here.
Sunny Zia.
Here.
Okay, we will adjourn after I read, oh, are there any comments from the public? Seeing no cards, I will assume there are none. And these are the things that we will be discussing in closed session. Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release, conference call with legal counsel, Randy Erickson. AFT negotiations pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957.6. Chief Negotiator, Rose Delgado. 1.6, LBCCFA negotiation pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957.6. Chief Negotiator, Jean Duran. 1.7 pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release. And now, we will adjourn to closed session. I would like to reconvene the open session. Call to order, Madam Secretary. Here.
Jeff Kellogg.
Here.
Vivian Malauulu. Doug Otto.
Here.
Sunny Zia.
Here.
Okay, now, let us do the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask President Romali to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Who's that person over there?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to remind the audience, this is President Romali's first official meeting, and we welcome her. And there was a reception before the closed session for the public to come and greet her, and I was very pleased with the number of staff, the classified staff and faculty and administrators who were there to greet, plus local officials, people of the selection committee, and the general public. So I think you got a good welcome there. And so we're very, very pleased that you're here. And we will be having a official, big welcome, welcome in the fall, somewhere probably downtown. Okay, regarding the closed session items, number 1.4, there is nothing to report out. And on number 1.5, there is nothing to report out. The rest of the agenda will be covered after the open session. So we will resume closed session after the open session. Okay, approval of minutes. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Trustee Zia, seconded by Trustee Kellogg. You ready? Okay, call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu. Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, 2.6, I have two special announcements, and then I'm going to turn it over to President Romali. The first special announcement is, the Board of Trustees would like to recognize Anne Marie Gabel, the interim acting superintendent and president. Anne Marie, you're down there, okay. Anne Marie, you did a fantastic job. I know people appreciated the fact that you tried to attend practically every function. You did so very competently and pro the college and represented us very, very well. And so on behalf of the Board of Trustees, I would like to present you with this recognition for outstanding service to Long Beach City College as Acting Superintendent and President on this day, May 30th, 2017. Thank you very much. Where do you want to go? Well, I know, I didn't know if you wanted to take the time to line up Board members. Okay, Simone, you want to come back with my colleagues joining us? We're going to have a very lengthy, okay, we're going to have a very lengthy meeting tonight, so. Your colleague.
Are we taking pictures with every agenda item?
Anne Marie, why don't you get in the middle? Is that all right? Yeah, that's great.
Thank you very much, and it really was my pleasure to be the Acting Superintendent President for the short time that I was, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And now, we also want to recognize Alejandro Lomelli, who is our wonderful student trustee for two semesters, and he's moving on to, what did you decide?
Two years.
Two years.
Until tomorrow midnight decides.
Oh, you haven't decided yet? You're not going to tell us, okay. Yes, Alejandro's been our student trustee for two years. So, we have a plaque for you.
Yeah, can you mind? Come on, Doug, come on.
Are you a graduation?
Huh?
You're a graduation?
Yeah.
We do graduation too, so. Oh, okay, that's an idea.
Would it be, is it okay if, like, one does it? Yeah. Regular. Sorry, everyone, this doesn't happen very often.
One to you.
I'm getting your act out between us.
So whatever you want.
Awesome, thank you. So I'll keep it, I know there's an agenda item for the resolution for student trustee, and I've been waiting two years to hear you guys say some really nice things about me. So I don't know if I'll, I'll just go ahead and wait for that. I think that's an appropriate time to kind of respond.
Okay.
But I really do appreciate, you know, all the hard work that the community colleges put into, you know, the student life and engagement, and also the student leaders that we have here on campus, so, thank you. I appreciate it very much.
And we appreciate you, Alejandro. Okay, President Romali.
Good evening, everyone. We have some five very special retirements tonight from employees who have been, or retiring from Long Beach City College. What I'm going to do is name their names and talk to you about their years of service. Then I'm going to come down to the podium and present you with the certificates and give you an opportunity to say a few words. I want to say thank you and congratulations to Linda King, who is an arts professor, and she has served the institution from August 16th, 1991, 26 years until June 8th of 2017. Congratulations, Linda. Congratulations to Elvia Mieris, food and nutrition and dietetics professor. She has served the institution as well, 26 years, from August 16th, 1991 to June 8th, 2017. Congratulations. We're also recognizing tonight the retirement of Lewis Goldsmith, who has been a painter with Long Beach City College for 12 years. His dates of service were October 10th, 2005, to October 10th, 2017. Congratulations, Lewis. Hui Nguyen has been a financial aid specialist with us for 30 years. Hui started the service on October 27th, 1986, and is retiring July 6th, 2017. Congratulations, Hui. Congratulate Linda Roseff, who is an academic administrative assistant, who's been with Long Beach City College for 27 years, from March 7th, 1990 to July 7th, 2017.
Yeah, she's in Vegas, because we changed the date of the maybe.
Come on, Linda.
Come on, Linda, we see you. Is Hui here? Lewis? I know Linda King probably isn't.
I don't see Hui.
Okay, well, you'll have to represent everybody.
I'm a little bit shy when I see people in Catholic gowns, but today's not graduation, is it?
Linda, do you want your husband to get his camera?
He can get closer.
He's coming right here.
City College is quite an institution, and I've traveled around a lot in different areas here at the college, and I'm just grateful for the opportunity to have worked here so long. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, reorder. Reordering of the agenda, only for requesting to move agenda items to different times on the agenda.
I have others.
Oh, Elvia, come on!
No, no, I, we were trying to get the right thing so we could come down and honor this retirement. Oh, Sheila.
Do you have any speaker calls?
No?
Okay. I have to walk back for a second to get my, I don't know why it won't let me come on.
Tried to sneak out of this, but I couldn't get away. I created a little speech, I hope you don't mind.
No, that's great, please.
Okay. It's hard to encapsulize 26 years of service here, but I'm retiring after 26 years of service here to the college and to the students. My career began over 27 years ago, and I thought you'd like to hear this, so you'd know a little bit about our program. I was consulted by a colleague, and she asked me to take some dietetics students as part of a clinical field experience at my work site. So I said, sure, why not? And she brought me students, and then a few months later, she says, hey, there's an open position at Long Beach City College, 10-year track, hasn't been open in 25 years, so I thought, great, okay, you know, why did you think I wanted to teach? I've never wanted to teach, and I'm really not interested, and she kept bugging me. This is Dr. Linda Hoy, she just retired two years ago. She kept bugging me, you should work at this job. It's a great job, you could mentor students, you've got good dietetic experience, and I said, I finally said, okay, okay, I'll apply for the position, but I probably won't get it. So I applied for the position, and I got it, and then I said, oh my God, what am I going to do now? So my husband said, well, I guess you're a professor now, you better go at it. So that's what I've been doing for the past 24 years, working in the classroom, teaching sanitation, food preparation, food production management. Many of the courses that are required for a student to work as a dietary supervisor in long-term health care. So those were my first 24 years. The last two years, I've worked as the program director, and I've been out in the field visiting various clinical sites, and much to my surprise, I ran into all my former students. They're working as dietary supervisors, they're working as directors of food and nutrition programs, of large hospitals, smaller long-term care facilities, and it was like, whoa, what a nice surprise, I got to see all the fruits of our labor. So, very proud of our program, and one of my former students, who I hadn't seen in 22 years, said, the last time I saw you, you were pregnant. And I said, wow, that was 22 years ago, my son's 22 years old now. And he says, wow, is that how long I've been doing this job? So to me, it was very gratifying to see these students doing a great job, they love what they're doing, and now they're becoming mentors to our students. So, it's a very nice turnaround circle, and I'm happy to have been a part of it. Now I'm moving on to retirement, and I'm looking forward to being up in the Santa Rita Hills area. My husband and I have built a new home, and we're going to practice ranching and growing some grapes, and hopefully having a lot of good times, so, thank you all for having me here today.
Thank you, Elvia.
And congratulations, President Romali. Welcome to Long Beach City College.
Okay, ASB Presidents' Report, Eric.
Good evening, Board members, Vice Presidents, Academic Senate President Kane, and a special welcome to Superintendent President Dr. Romali, and lastly, to Student Trustee Alejandro Lomelli, on his last official meeting. As the academic year comes to a close, the ASP is continually pushing to end the year strong. In the first week of May, members of the ASP Cabinet attended the Students' Senate for California Community Colleges General Assembly. I myself was privileged to attend, and was fascinated by all the collaborative work that's being done at the state level by student leaders of all colleges. Elections were held May 16th through 18th at Long Beach City College, and we're happy to announce and introduce to you my successor, Javier Salcedo, the ASP President for 2017-2018 school year. Also in the audience today is the new Student Trustee, Jorge Chavez. Continuing, the LAC Cultural Affairs Council held their second multicultural festival this year, which was a major success. Their constant effort to ensure all cultures are represented here on campus is something ASP takes great pride in. This past week, at the Viking Volunteer Luncheon, one of our cabinet members, Dominique Kadachi, was awarded the Mother Teresa Award for Service through her heavy involvement in Sexual Assault Awareness Month and events here on campus, and even though she's not here, I wanted to give her a round of applause. We will honor the students of the John Philpott Leadership Institute, the Viking Award winners, and the ASP Cabinet this Friday, June 2nd, at 6:00 PM, and I look forward to seeing each one of you there. Spring Sing was this past Friday, and everyone who attended had the privilege of witnessing awesome skits and performances by OB/CC students and faculty alike. We would like to thank everyone that participated. Crab Night is tonight in the E-Building, where students get to catch up on all the procrastination stuff that they've been doing throughout the semester, and then Thursday night in the PCC Student Union, and Reveal Day, College Reveal Day, is going to be June 5th. And lastly, it was a privilege and an honor serving the students of Long Beach City College this past year. I'm proud of everything the ASP has accomplished as a whole, and I'm looking forward to seeing what the next ASP Cabinet holds in store for us this upcoming academic year. I wish them the best of luck and nothing but success. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
So I wanted to just make a quick comment about what these guys are like, Eric and Alejandro, and that is, so I think it was two or three weeks ago, my granddaughter, who was graduating from college and got a job in Long Beach, was moving here, and she said, grandpa, what do, what do young people do in Long Beach? And I said, well, I don't know, because they usually go out after I've gone to bed. And so we talked to Alejandro, and I said, what, and he said, bring her to us. And so, I brought my granddaughter, and we met him, and we went out for a while, and they showed her a great time, and they had more insight into Long Beach than, well, mine's are different insights into Long Beach, but, so it was great. These are the kinds of guys that have been our student leaders this last year, so thank you.
Very good. Okay, and Eric Mariegos, I got it right, huh? Every time, I've not said his last name for fear of, by the, as a salute.
On his way to Berkeley.
Well, very good, very good.
President Baxter, can I just say very briefly that I just wanted to thank you, Eric, you did a great job. I can't wait to hear about your adventures when you come back from Berkeley. Eric wants to teach here, come back to Long Beach City College and give back, so I look forward to seeing you, hopefully you'll still be around. Thank you, Eric.
Yes, yes, Vivian.
Eric, I too would like to echo everyone's sentiment to congratulate you on a job well done as our student body president. You were very inspiring to the rest of the student body, thank you for your service, and congratulations to our incoming ASB President, as well as our incoming Student Trustee. We are definitely in good hands with the student leadership that you provide, thank you.
Okay.
I want to, that is the highest praise you'll ever get, not from Trustee Malauulu, just did it, but from a Stanford graduate to give a Cal person to say anything nice, that was pretty remarkable. But, everyone has said, thank you very much for your service, it's been a real pleasure working with you, and what I like most is that you always had a positive outlook, as all of you did, in your action with our student leadership. And I don't say that lightly, because we've been in scenarios where going across people that look like they've sucked on lemons all day, and so it was just that positive type of leadership who will carry you far. So best of luck, as my parents said, they're both graduates, it's not Berkeley, it's Cal. There's only one Cal, everyone else refers to by cities, but best of luck to you, and I hope you have a great time.
That's right, thank you for that correction. Okay, public comments on agenda items. There appears to be no cards, so we will go on, and the next thing, and I don't know if I was out of order, I'm going to say I wasn't out of order, but the Board has a resolution in honor of Mr. Lomelli, and President Romali will take care of that, right? Nope? Okay. Who?
No.
Okay, the resolution.
I believe we have to have a motion, that's why it's there.
Oh, okay. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'm going to let Trustee Otto be so moved, and Trustee Kellogg second, because Trustee Zia, I know you will do it later for us. Okay, somebody needs to open board docs for the resolution. Was the resolution the certificate, or?
Okay. We need to take a roll call.
Oh, here we go, oh, okay.
What discussion?
But don't, don't we have to read the resolution before we take a vote? That's what I thought. Okay, thank you, it's up here right now. Resolution, the Board of Trustees of the Long Beach Community College District commending Alejandro Lomelli, Student Trustee. Whereas Alejandro Lomelli was duly appointed by his peers to serve as the student member of the Board of Trustees, Long Beach Community College District, for the 2015-16 and 2016-17 year, and has served as such, and whereas such appointment was made in accordance with the California Education Code and the Constitution of the Associated Student Body, Long Beach City College, and whereas he has actively participated in the meetings of the Board of Trustees, keeping the members apprised of the concerns and recommendations of the student body, as well as the accomplishments of the student body and individual students, and whereas he has in turn kept the student body apprised of the actions of the Board of Trustees, so that the students might better understand the roles and responsibilities of the Board, and whereas he has played an active role in representing the students of Long Beach City College in Sacramento, keeping the legislators apprised of the issues facing community college students, and I want to say, Alejandro, you have really done that magnificently, and whereas, did I miss this one? Yeah, he has represented his peers diligently, setting an example for future student trustees to follow, and has been a passionate advocate on behalf of Long Beach City College student veteran community, and now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees of the Long Beach Community College District commend Alejandro Lomelli for his services on this board, and accord him the special recognition he deserves in witness whereof. We have set our hands this 30th day of May, 2017, and we will have signed your resolution, and now, because this is an action item, we need to have a vote.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion. Mr. Kellogg.
And there's really no discussion in regards to supporting the resolution, but I just, very rare to have a student trustee serve two years.
Never.
I don't remember anyone ever doing it, and that's not ever, but the fact is, it is unique. Sometimes you wonder about, is this going to be two years of misery, not just for you, but for the Board, but the resolution on all the activities you were involved with the statewide organizations, with other student groups, has really been remarkable, and also just how you've been an advocate for the college and the students' voice has been remarkable. So, I just wanted to express publicly my appreciation of how you've conducted yourself as a student trustee over the past two years. It really has been a pleasure working with you. There's been, and we didn't list all the other awards, you were a year ago, were the Viking Award winner, which, so people know, I was trying to get him to drive back to me with me from a reception, so I could get some insight, because he didn't know his mom was showing up at the event, and I was presenting the rewards, so I wanted to have some, you know, insightful, and he looked at me, goes, no, I'll catch a ride with somebody else. So I just sort of.
That's how important you are.
Yeah, and I just sort of, and then you realize, when we were standing there, where I was trying to get more information, but a remarkable student, you really are the image of what we love to see here at Long Beach City College, representing this city, and the community, and the college, and yourself, and you should be very proud, and when you look at individuals that we have here previously with our student leadership and yourself, it's overstated too many times, but you talk about the future as very bright, this sounds like a commencement speech, but the fact is, that when you have individuals like yourself and others here at the college, it makes us very proud to be part of this college, and knowing that we have these type of students that are coming through this institution, and I am convinced will have a positive impact in this community in so many ways, so we were just very proud to have, just for a short period of time in our lives, and we wish you the best. of Long Beach City College in Sacramento, keeping the legislators apprised of the issues facing community college students." And I want to say, Alejandro, you have really done that magnificently. And whereas, did I miss this one? Yeah. "He has represented his peers diligently, setting an example for future student trustees to follow, and has been a passionate advocate on behalf of Long Beach City College student veteran community, and now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees of the Long Beach Community College District commend Alejandro Lomelli for his services on this board, and accord him the special recognition he deserves in witness whereof. We have set our hands this 30th day of May 2017." And we will have signed your resolution. And now, because this is an action item, we need to have a vote.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion. Mr. Kellogg.
And there's really no discussion in regards to supporting the resolution, but I just, very rare to have a student trustee serve two years.
Never.
And I don't remember anyone ever doing it, and that's not ever, but the fact is, it is unique. Sometimes you wonder about, is this going to be two years of misery, not just for you, but for the Board? But the resolution on all the activities you were involved with, the statewide organizations, with other student groups, has really been remarkable. And also just how you've been an advocate for the college and the students' voice has been remarkable. So I just wanted to express publicly my appreciation of how you've conducted yourself as a student trustee over the past two years. It really has been a pleasure working with you. There's been, and we didn't list all the other awards. You were a year ago, were the Viking Award winner, which, so people know, I was trying to get him to drive back to me, with me from a reception, so I could get some insight, because he didn't know his mom was showing up at the event, and I was presenting the rewards, so I wanted to have some, you know, insightful. And he looked at me, goes, "No, I'll catch a ride with somebody else." So I just sort of...
That's how important you are.
Yeah, and I just sort of, and then you realize, when we were standing there, where I was trying to get more information, but a remarkable student. You really are the image of what we love to see here at Long Beach City College, representing this city, and the community, and the college, and yourself, and you should be very proud. And when you look at individuals that we have here, previously with our student leadership and yourself, it's overstated too many times, but you talk about the future as very bright. This sounds like a commencement speech, but the fact is that when you have individuals like yourself and others here at the college, it makes us very proud to be part of this college, and knowing that we have these type of students that are coming through this institution. And I am convinced will have a positive impact in this community in so many ways. So we were just very proud to have, just for a short period of time in our lives, and we wish you the very best, because you've been an outstanding example. And I personally have enjoyed every time, especially sitting next to you. I wore my very best socks today, that had really wild color, if I could outdo you. Okay, came close. I'm older. But, so every part about working with you has been sheer joy, so thank you very much. We'll see you at commencement as well. But again, when we get to see students like you and others here, it makes our jobs very rewarding. So congratulations, well deserved, wish you the very best.
Trustee Zia.
Well, how do you top that? I'll try to be brief, but yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have fancy socks to show, but Alejandro, I'm so proud of you. You're just wonderful in every way. I have to tell you, it kind of spooks me when I see you everywhere that I'm at, so I know you're thinking about pursuing a career in law enforcement, but perhaps the Central Intelligence Agency may be also a viable future for you, because you're pretty good at being covert. But really, just echoing what Trustee Kellogg has said, the two years is awesome. It shows confidence in your student body and membership, and how great of a leader you are. I'm really going to miss you, sitting next to me. I'm particularly going to miss that hair. I think our president can learn from you, and that fabulous, amazing hair of yours, besides the intellect and the charm. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Zia. Thank you, Trustee Zia. Trustee Otto, you're all set?
Well, I wanted to put this all in perspective. I want you to understand that shortly before you came, became the student trustee, our student trustee sued us. So... Why are we laughing about that?
Okay, Trustee, were you...
It were really a step up. But to echo what Trustee Zia said, yeah, I feel the same way. I will go to Sacramento to do something, and I'll turn around, and you'll be in Sacramento. Or I'll be in downtown Long Beach, and you'll be in downtown Long Beach. And so you've been everywhere, you've, I think, grown as a trustee. You've really been an effective advocate for our students, and for yourself. I've watched you grow in this job over these two years, and I even got to like your Facebook posts, including those that were posted about you, as well as the ones that... So we're looking forward to continuing to know you and to follow your progress, so congratulations on two years of excellent work.
Okay, Trustee Malauulu.
Thank you. It's not a surprise that this Board has a lot of respect and appreciation for student trustee Alejandro Lomelli. Just to reiterate what everybody has already said, what impresses me the most about him is how professional he is. And I think I've said at several meetings, with specific examples of times that we've tried to get information out of him, especially during the hiring process of our superintendent president, and he was just consummate professional. He wouldn't spill the beans. He is also a great example for the student body here, and I look forward to many things in the future, and hopefully he can come back to the college and serve us in a more executive administrative capacity someday, because we'd love to have him back, and we wish you lots of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not going to say anything more. Okay, on to, oh, we have to vote.
Do you mind if I?
Okay, I guess so.
Okay, awesome, thanks.
Yes, you're right.
So I definitely, I appreciate all the, you know, positive comments that I've heard, you know, throughout my entire term. Two years is kind of a long time, you know, when I look back at it, I was like, I think I've served on student government for, since my very first week coming here at the college, so I've been serving on student government for three years. And then someone was like, "That's really excellent." And I was like, "That just means I've been here too long," I think. But, you know, I've been very passionate and have really found, you know, a community here in Long Beach. I wasn't from a Long Beach high school, I wasn't from the area, you know, and I don't really, I mean, advertise it to many people, but I took some time off after high school to kind of just figure myself out, and really kind of understand where I wanted to go. And then kind of decided to apply to Long Beach City College on a whim, just because of, you know, our local community, and just figuring out that I wanted to go into law enforcement after my time away from school. But really, these past three years have really been a highlight of my life. I've given a lot to this college, and I've gotten a lot back from this college. I've been inspired by many people, both students, faculty, staff, administrators. I met some lifelong friends here, and I met some Facebook friends that I hope to keep in contact with. And then to kind of echo Doug's comments, Doug kind of comments on my Facebook profile a lot, so my mom's kind of worried to see who this old guy is that comments on my Facebook pretty frequently. I just, I don't tell him who Doug is, so I just let her guess who this old guy is commenting on my Facebook page. But it's been a great time, and I'm really excited to see, we're all going, and I'm really excited to see, you know, where everyone else here ends up, because sometimes, you know, this, as we celebrate some retirements, some individuals might leave the community, might pursue different careers. But I'm really excited to see that anyone that came through Long Beach City College leaves with a positive image of the college. And, you know, someone once told me, when we were talking about what Long Beach really is, and they were saying that, once you get in, it's kind of hard to get out, and not because you don't want to get out, it's more like because you want to stay and help out and be a part of the community. And I've really felt that in my time here. I felt that from everyone here, both in the audience that we've had slight interactions with, to very close contact individuals here on the Board as well, from, you know, all across the aisle here. I've never had any negative, you know, interactions with anyone here, and I'm very humbled by all the praise, and I told you I've been waiting two years for this, so thank you all for the positive comments. And if you wanted to say anything else nice to me, feel free to give me a call after.
I think you should just tell your mother I handled your expungements.
I still have like a day to sue Doug. So yeah, my term expires tomorrow, I'm super excited. I'm looking at, you know, I don't really know where I'll, most likely cancel Long Beach, I keep saying that, but I'm really excited to see where I'll go, and I'm super excited to see where Long Beach goes, you know, as well, there's a lot of changes that are happening here with initiatives, with new leadership as well. And, you know, I have just the utmost respect for everyone here at the college, and I'm really excited to see what Horrell has to do with, as a new student trustee, so I'm super excited for that. And I'll most likely be one of the weird ones watching the YouTube videos of the Board of Trustees meetings from a year from now, but I'll be there, and sometimes I'll come into the meetings. But thank you all for a great time, and I really do mean a great time. There was mentioned that some of the meetings are kind of tedious, and I won't deny that. And they're sometimes a little scary sometimes. I think my first few meetings were a little, something I did not prepare for, you don't really get this kind of training in a classroom. But you all have really benefited me just individually with a lot of leadership skills and any type of soft skills that I might not have learned inside the classroom. So this is a great experience, and I always recommend individuals to get involved with the community, and making sure that we're empowering our own students as long as ourselves. But thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alejandro. Oh, now we need to take a roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, 3.2, change of December 12 meeting, regular Board meeting to December 19, 2017, and set Board retreat for July 28, 2017.
So moved.
Okay, Trustee Zia moved, and Trustee Kellogg seconded it. The Board of Trustees approved the change of the meeting dates, as I said, and basically these meetings have been changed for, due to scheduling, and will ensure that everyone is here for two very important meetings, the December meeting and the Board Retreat. So, are we ready?
President Baxter, President Baxter, may I just say a word here? I just wanted to thank you and the rest of the Board for changing December 12 meeting date to December 19, so we can observe the evening of Hanukkah, those of us who observe the Jewish High Holy Holidays. So I wanted to thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Okay, my pleasure. Thank you. Okay, call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, excellent. Presentations, 4.1, the 2016 Annual Report on Campus Crime. Vice President Gable, are you introducing Lieutenant Lieberman?
I certainly can.
Says it right here.
Yes. So it's my pleasure to introduce Lieutenant Jeff Lieberman, who is the lieutenant here in charge of Long Beach City College. He's been here just a few months, but we were already seeing fantastic things and some changes within the Long Beach PD LBCC unit. So I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Lieberman, and he'll give us the report on our 2016 crime statistics.
Good evening, and thank you very much, trustees, for the opportunity to present to you and to the audience tonight about the annual report on campus crime for 2016. Again, my name is Jeff Lieberman. I'm the lieutenant responsible for the Long Beach Police Department's contract here at Long Beach City College. I've been here since November of 2016, and I love it here. So thank you for the warm welcome. I've had a wonderful time, and this is a fantastic opportunity for me to share some really good news with you, and to highlight the hard work that the men and women that work for the Long Beach Police Department, both our police officers and special service officers, do to make this one of the safest community colleges in California. You've all been provided with a copy of the 2016 Clary Report, which is a report mandated by the Department of Education that must disclose camp, reported crime on campus throughout the nation. I do want to draw your attention to the last bullet point, because there is some discrepancy in the actual crime statistics that appear in the Clary, the published Clary Report and the presentation I'm going to give you this evening. The Clary Report mandates that all reported crime gets reported to the Department of Education and then published for the public to see. The numbers that I am going to present to you tonight in this presentation reflect the year-end 2016 numbers that we report to the FBI's Uniform Crime Report. These are final analyzed crime numbers after these incidents have been vetted, investigated, and, you know, properly adjudicated within the police department, the criminal justice system. The Clary crimes that you see are as reported to the police department on campus, so please keep that in mind. I just wanted to kind of cover very briefly the Long Beach Police Department City College section goals. Of course, our number one priority is to always protect life and property, that's why we're here. But honestly, this is about service. This is about service to all the stakeholders in the community and here at Long Beach City College. And I take a special obligation to serve as an ambassador of law enforcement to the campus community. As our recent years have shown, there is quite a bit of discontent and discord within, you know, within our country, and differences of opinion, and a lot of people on campus are impressionable. So I see it as critical that myself and everybody that works for the police department serve as ambassadors for the profession, to help answer questions and inspire students like Mr. Lomelli here to follow in our footsteps and inherit this profession, take us to the next level. We're also here to educate the educators, to act as a resource for all the campus stakeholders, the, you know, students, faculty, and staff, but especially faculty and staff. We spend a great deal of time out and about in campus, being visible, being seen, conducting briefings to classes, courses, in personal safety and crime prevention, conducting emergency preparation seminars, conducting active killer mass casualty exercises. And we use a variety of sources to do that, most of which is personal contact. We want everybody here to feel comfortable reporting to us. And I think when we, when I go through the numbers, you'll see that it's paying off. We are actively involved in student discipline. Of course, we're here to enforce the law, but many of the issues we deal with here are student discipline related, and should be handled administratively rather than through the criminal justice system. So on a daily or weekly basis, we are in direct contact with student discipline and contribute to that process. We're also members of our Behavior Intervention Team. This is a multiple disciplinary team, consisting of the Vice President of Student Support Services, the Associate Vice President of Human Resources, the Dean of Student Affairs, the Director of Student Conduct and Student Life, the Director of Student Life and Student Health Services, the Director of Human Resources, the Director of Business Support Services, the Manager of Environmental Health and Safety, and myself. And we meet on a regular basis to evaluate potential threats on campus involving any of the stakeholders here, students, faculty, staff, and come up with the best strategy, using all the resources available at our disposal to protect the campus community and to get people that need help to help. So, the great news is that we are experiencing a significant decrease in crime, reported incidents here at City College on both campuses. The stats that you see are combined PCC and LAC. So a reported incident, as defined in this, is an incident where we take a department record, we actually pull a crime report or a department record number for the police department. So that can be anything from an actual crime to a student discipline issue, or a special accident, or a risk management issue here on campus. So there's, between 2015 and 2016, we've had a 14% decrease at LAC. We've experienced a 21% decrease in reported incidents at PCC, for a total decrease with both campuses of 16%, which I see as great news. As it relates to property crime, we are, we've experienced a decrease in all categories except for burglary. We had seven burglaries combined at both PCC and LAC in 2016, and most of that is related to break-ins at PCC during construction, the JJII and, bear with me for a second here, the IIJJ and MM buildings. There's a construction project going on there that was kind of a magnet for opportunistic burglars to break in at night and attempt to steal property. And then at LAC, we experienced, there were three burglaries at PCC, and there were four burglaries at LAC, including an auto burglary, a burglary to a D226 where three computers were stolen overnight in July, and then an attempted, an actual burglary, an attempted break-in to the ATM in the E-Build in December. The thefts that have occurred on campus are still primarily bike thefts. Students are, we encourage them to use the robust U-Locks, and those are most effective in securing bicycles, we're trying to get that message out. However, most of the bikes that are stolen are stolen with old chains. Suspects are able to come onto campus very quickly, cut the chains, and leave the campus. And then, of course, common loss are unattended purses and computers, people leave on tables or in classrooms, and they just walk away. As far as violent crimes go, we experienced four robberies in 2016. We had two in, at LAC, and two at PCC. All of the loss in both, three of the, three of the four robberies were for cell phones. Distracted students on the cellphone were approached by opportunistic suspects, and either had them forcibly removed, or they were actually physically assaulted and had their iPhones stolen. The other student at PCC had money and credit cards taken at a student drop-off occasion. We had no sex offenses in 2016, which is a fantastic, fantastic news. We had a total of three felony arrests in 2016, none of which, none of the arrestees were students. One for domestic violence, one for a parole violation, and one for auto theft. Somebody was arrested on campus in a stolen vehicle. We had nine misdemeanor arrests in 2016 for a variety of offenses, four of which, four of the nine were for students. Other reported incidents, which include disciplinary issues, special accidents, risk management issues, we had 32 reports taken, we had 30 traffic accidents on both campuses, and 11 vandalism reports. Although the number of reported incidents is down significantly, as you can see, we have a 57% increase in calls for service, which I see as great news. That tells me that there's more officer-initiated activity, our officers are more engaged in the community, and there are more calls from the stakeholders that trust us. These include, you know, requests to unlock classrooms, safety escorts, requests from faculty members to stop by at the end of, end of class at night to make sure that people get to their cars safely. So it really shows that we're trusted and respected and needed and wanted on campus, and I... And I, I'm very proud of that statistic. So it's definitely something to be proud of and I'm exceptionally proud of the men and women that work in the City College Section for, for working so hard to keep this place safe. Since I began here, I wanted to refocus and kind of relaunch the Campus Police Department. And we've invested, as we move forward, a significant amount of time and effort into campus engagement. As I said, we, we want to serve as ambassadors for the profession. We want to be visible, we want to be seen, and we want to be part of the fabric of the community here on campus. We have launched a Twitter, a Twitter page. So those of you that are on Twitter, please follow us @LBCCPolice for breaking crime trends, safety tips, and general information about what we're doing on campus. We've engaged in Cold Stone Cops, Ice Cream Socials at both campuses, where our officers put on aprons and made ice cream sundaes for the students, had a fantastic turnout. Really, it helps break down the barriers, you know, people see beyond the uniform and we're able to connect with students in a different way. We've also, with the gracious donations from the Viking Food Court and from the bookstore who donated gift cards, we started a Catch Someone Doing Something Right campaign where our officers hand out $5 gift cards to both of those, those businesses to promote behavior. So if a student is seen, I mean, something as simple as picking up litter on campus and throwing it away, they earn themselves a gift card. So when I look around today, this campus is spotless. So it's been a fantastic success. We've conducted assessments at the Child Development Center for, for, you know, engaged with the children there. So very, very happy that we're engaged in getting out there more and more and more visible. And we've also launched the first in a series of videos, outreach videos, that I'd like to share with you, with, with the instructional media production unit. Hello, I'm Lieutenant Jeff Lieberman with the Long Beach Police Department's Long Beach City College Section. The City College Section is your Campus Police Department and we're located in the X Building at 5020 Lou Davis Street between Clark and Faculty. Our dedicated police and special service officers are here to assist you and serve as a resource for any safety-related matter you may encounter while on district property. All of our personnel are trained and equipped to respond to any contingency, from crime to medical emergencies, and we are here to serve you 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Our number one priority is to work with you to make Long Beach City College the safest community college in the nation. Campus safety is a shared responsibility involving all of us at Long Beach City College. Even though LBCC is one of the safest community college districts in the state, we strive to make it even safer by challenging students, faculty, staff, and neighbors to partner with us to make Long Beach City College a hostile work environment for criminals. It's important that all college stakeholders help deter crime by securing your valuables and district property by locking your cars, never leaving items like computers, cameras, cell phones, or other desirable property unattended, even for an instant. Most importantly, if you see anyone acting in a suspicious way like loitering in parking lots, looking into parked vehicles, entering unoccupied classrooms, offices, or district buildings after hours, or behaving in a threatening, aggressive, or criminal manner, call 911 immediately from your cellphone, any campus telephone, or any of the 30 blue emergency phones located throughout the Liberal Arts and Pacific Coast campuses. A Long Beach City College Section Officer will be dispatched. If possible, stay on the phone with the operator and provide your location, detailed description of the suspicious or criminal behavior, and a detailed description of the suspect. If at any time you need a safety escort while on district property, pick up one of the blue emergency phones on campus or call 938-4910. Long Beach City College Police and Special Service Officers protect your college 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and are here to protect you. If you have any questions or suggestions to improve campus safety, please email us at askyourpolice@lbcc.edu or call 938-4910. So our vision is, this is the first in a series of videos we're going to produce with various segments of the campus to promote safety and push this out through social media as well as the new campus website, the new City College website. So finally, on April 6th, we conducted the largest mass casualty drill that we've ever done here at the Pacific Coast Campus where every police officer and every firefighter on duty that day in the entire city cycled through and worked together to address a simulated active shooter incident at, at the Pacific Coast Campus. While this was occurring, the, the City College Emergency Operation Team met in an adjacent building and exercised their response to this scenario as well. So it was a huge collaborative effort, effort that I think was fantastic. It exposed a lot of our officers and firefighters that have never had to come on campus to the campus. They know where to go now, they're more familiar with it, and it gave us an opportunity to work. We had a lot of, over 100 student and staff volunteers. It was a fun day and we got some exposure through local media. So it was an excellent opportunity. So I look forward to serving you. Everybody in the City College Section looks forward to serving you in the years ahead. And with that, I'd like to entertain any questions.
Okay, thank you Lieutenant Lieberman. Any questions? Okay, Trustee Malauulu.
Thank you Lieutenant Lieberman for a really well-done report. I have a couple of questions, but before, before I get to them, I just want to commend you because it does feel as if the campus is a lot safer. I appreciate the effort that you and your staff are making to become more engaged and definitely the friendly and helpful police officers on campus are a lot more visible. So I appreciate that. I have a couple of questions. When you talked about the Clary, is that the Clary Act or?
Yes, the Clary Report.
Okay, the Clary Report. You mentioned back to that slide, you mentioned that those are reported incidents?
Correct, as reported to us.
So how do we find out what the outcome of those reported incidents are?
The outcome of those are-
Like if there's a conviction or if there's, you know, what happens? You know, say, you know, hypothetically speaking, if we have 25 incidents that are reported, you know, is there an investigation? Is the suspect, you know, arrested? How do we find out what happens after that?
Well, every crime that is reported to us does, does reach a, is brought into our system and is appropriately investigated and vetted. I would have to get you that information on a case-for-case basis. If you have a specific question about a specific crime, I can get you, get you that information. It would be prohibitive of, you know, of our resources to be able to vet, to provide that information on every single crime that was reported to us.
Sure. And I don't have a specific question about a specific incident. What, what I want to know, I guess in general terms, is for our own information, what, what happens from once they're reported to you? You pursue them, however you pursue them, but then, you know, how do we know that it, it ends? The investigation is just kind of moot or it's dissolved? Or is, was there actual conviction that resulted as a, you know, a product of your investigation?
I get, the best, the best way I can answer that is, you know, based on a, on a case-by-case basis, I can give you the information. Because depending on the crime, some crimes, there are no clues, there are no leads, and they go unsolved. Some where an arrest is made, you know, a suspect may plead and it may never get to trial. It may, it may not get prosecuted and the defendant may be, may be released. Every incident has its own factors and it's, it's hard for me to give you a specific answer.
Okay.
But if at any time, you know, I read every single police report that is, that is written on district property. So if any of you have any questions about any police activity or, or reported crime, please get ahold of me and I will do my best to provide you with the information that I can. And understand there are some investigations that I can't discuss until they're-
Sure.
-they're disposed and those can take quite a long time.
Sure. Just a couple more, I think these will probably be quick questions. I saw your breakdown and I really appreciated that by campus, the LAC and the PCC campus. What I, and it's probably just me, the way my mind works, but what I, I didn't see was how many, and maybe it was there and I just missed it. How many thefts and burglaries were at LAC? How many thefts and burglaries were at PCC? I just saw the total, the cumulative number. Do you have a breakdown per crime, per campus?
I did, I don't have it on a slide, but I do have that information.
Okay.
In the interest of brevity, I combined both campuses, but for next year's, I can, if that's what you want, I can break it down per campus.
Sure. The PCC campus is in my district, so I would just like to know a little bit more information about what we can do to address certain crimes in that area if that community is prone to certain crimes on our campus.
Sure, absolutely, I understand.
It would be helpful to me to know specifically.
Trustee Malauulu, the answer is actually in the report that has been provided. So for the PCC campus, it's on page 22.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that.
And just to reiterate, the, the information that you see on page 22 is the crime that was reported but has not gone through the, the process and is, may differ slightly from the, the numbers that I quoted to you in this presentation.
Okay, got it. Also, quick question, can you go back past 2015, just in the future, or did you just start keeping track, 2015, 2016?
I started this year with 2015, just going back one year. But again, if, if all of you want to have, you know, go back, tell me how many years you want and I will, I will put it in, in next year's presentation.
Vice President Gabel, is that available for Trustee Malauulu? Because every year, we have a report. So I mean, this is not something new.
Well, in, in the report that is part of the board packet, it has 2016, 2015, and 2014. If you want to go back farther than that, it is something that we can dig up and provide to you.
I think three years would probably be good, just to be able to see the changes. And the last question, and this is something because I know I allowed it in my classroom, since bike theft is such a problem, is, is there anything that we can do to encourage students to, because I've, I've had a student whose bike was stolen from a night class and, you know, I had to give him a ride home. He was devastated and his lock was broken. So when he did manage to get another bike, I just told him, leave it in my classroom. Is there anything that you or your staff can think of that we can do to help students bring the bikes inside? I mean, I'd hate to see 30 bikes in a classroom, but if they're not safe outside, what can we do to support students?
Well, I, I think it's up to each individual faculty member if they feel comfortable allowing their students to have bicycles in the room. There's, I think that's a great idea. Depending on how many students have bikes, it could be a distraction. But I, I do want to mention that the CCTV, the camera project is close to being completed on both campuses. And I think we will see a significant reduction in, in bike thefts when that occurs. We've been working very hard to get the message out to students over Twitter. If you see our Twitter account, we give, we took pictures of, this is how to secure your bike, this is how not to. It's an idea for one of the videos in our video series that we want to do where we actually show people how to do it. And when we have officers out and about on patrol and we see a student improperly locking a bike, you know, they, they do speak to them. So it takes, again, it takes all of us to, to, to pass that message. And, you know, that's, that's, I think, an effective strategy that you brought up and I'm certainly not opposed to it. You know, it could present some unintended consequences though if you did allow people to bring bikes in buildings and in the classrooms.
Sure. Thank you, thank you again. Great report. Thank you.
Trustee Zia?
Thank you. Thank you Lieutenant Lieberman and welcome. We gave you an official welcome back in November, but again, thank you for the great report. A few questions. First of all, I want to commend you on a couple of fronts. One is, I like the team that you have. They're very professional and they also represent our student population demographic. I tried to practice my Mandarin, the couple of words that I know with one of your officers, so hopefully I just get it that way. Just great, great team that you have. And I was going to ask about the camera and if they're been effective, but it seems like that's underway and it hasn't been fully implemented and to monitor the effects of it. But your report, unfortunately, I can't, I'm having trouble with my Wi-Fi here. Do you include in your statistics restraining orders or those kind of things from like the faculty towards a student or, you know, those type of data?
I do not. Restraining orders are civil processes that we do not get involved with unless there's a violation. And we did make an arrest for restraining order violation, I believe in 2016. That was one of the arrests. So that would be data that I would not be able to, to get because that's handled in the court system.
So what happens? Does it come to your attention and then it gets referred to a different unit outside of the, this jurisdiction? Is that how it works?
Well, a restraining order, there's several types. There's a workplace violence restraining order, there's a civil restraining order, and then there are protective orders that are issued by, by judges in court, criminal protective orders, domestic violence restraining orders. And again, we, we are not, we refer people that have those issues to the court to, to seek those restraining orders. And when there's a violation of them, you know, we have the ability to pull them through our databases when we're, we're out in the field and we're engaged with people and we run them through the computer, it'll tell us if they're either a protected person or somebody that's, that has a restraining order against them. And then we can conduct an investigation and, and follow through appropriately with, you know, our, our law enforcement authority. But I have no way of telling you how many people on campus have restraining orders against them or are protected persons. Again, that is handled strictly through the courts. We only get involved when there's a violation.
I see. And then as far as campus security, I know our campus community, specifically our human capital, our staff, were pretty troubled. This was prior, I think, to your start about just the safety in the classrooms. How has that been going since, you know, the last reports that we got? We had quite a bit of faculty and staff members who weren't feeling that they were secure or safe. And I want to make sure I check in to see how that's going.
Well, that's been the, a primary driver of our campus engagement initiative. I spend a lot of time addressing the faculty senate and, you know, various student groups. And we want to convey and, and personify safety on campus. It has been brought to my attention, you know, particular issues that some faculty members and staff members would like to see us more visible walking the halls. And, you know, I attempt to model that behavior. You can see me almost every day walking the campus a couple of times a day on both campuses. I encourage my, my staff to do that and they do. And the, the best way to, to increase that feeling of safety is, you know, to be approachable, to be seen and visible and become part of the, the campus fabric. And as you can see from the 2016 numbers, the numbers of calls for service, I think that really is indicative that, that people trust us and like us and call us. And I, I see that as a very positive sign, so I'd like to see that continue, you know, even higher than a 57% increase. I'd like to see even more engagement. But I'm always available to address any faculty group, any particular, you know, I, I had a meeting with, with the, the English faculty about a particular issue and, you know, spent a couple hours there listening to everybody and, you know, I'm in constant communication with them. And I, I, I'm putting all of us out there to be a resource for, you know, I don't want anybody to feel unsafe on campus because if they do, we're not doing our jobs and I take that personally. I'm heavily invested and take ownership in, in that feeling here and I want everybody to feel safe and feel safe approaching any of us for service.
All right, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much Lieutenant Lieberman.
Thank you.
All right, number 4.2, Strategic Plan Update. Eva Bagde, Dean of Institutional Effectiveness and Student Success, and Laura Sosenko, Director of Institutional Research, will give an update on the LBCC 2016-22 Plan, Strategic Plan. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Lauren Sosenko and I are very grateful for the opportunity to give an update on the Strategic Plan. You may, you may recall that last year at about this time, we presented to you our 2016-2022 Strategic Plan. At that time, the college had worked very hard to develop the strategies, the goals of the strategic plan, but we hadn't had time, ample time, we felt, to do a thoughtful job in developing targets that relate to the strategic metrics of the strategic plan. So that's going to be the focus of what Laura and I present this evening. But I did want to provide you with a brief update of how things have gone for the past year. Before I do that, I would like to again acknowledge the, the group that has really been responsible for not only the development of the strategic plan, but also overseeing the activities for the first year. for not only the development of the strategic plan, but also overseeing the activities for the first year. So you may recall that we have a group that was established by our college planning committee. It's the Strategic Planning Oversight Task Force. And I would like to, first of all, again, thank my co-chair of the strategic planning group, Karen Kane, also our academic senate president. She and I have been the co-chairs of an 11-member, what we call SPOT team. So the work that I'm giving you an update on now has really been under the oversight of that group. So we've talked about foundational work for implementing the plan. One of the things that you may recall that we did differently, that was really focused on helping get the strategic plan known, understood, and kind of get people excited about, we had a pre-college day. It was prior to our normal college day activities, and that was focused on the strategic plan. We promoted everybody understanding the plan and being part of the change. That was the tagline, to be the change. We've worked really hard this last year to embed the strategic plan in all of our planning processes or annual resource allocation and planning processes at every level of the college, department, school, division, vice president, division levels. We've also worked with other major college plans, for example, the technology plan, the distance learning plan. There's several other plans that we've worked with the leads on those plans to integrate with the strategic plan. Also, the Strategic Planning Oversight Task Force held dialogue sessions where we invited all of college campus. We've even had board members, and I appreciate where we've had participation, where people have come in fall. We focused on what's the completion agenda. We wanted people to have the opportunity to talk about that and understand what that means. This last spring, we've talked about guided pathways. That's a cornerstone of our strategic plan. So again, we had dialogue sessions where people came and, and had the opportunity to learn more and to give their further input. Also, we have had over the last two years, it really started as part of the development of the strategic plan. We had Friday night four-hour sessions where people initially participated in a visioning session, a SWOT analysis that led to the strategic plan. That group has been so large, cross-sectional, and so involved that we've had more sessions this year in spring where we have utilized a design thinking process to be creative about how to better address student needs. So that work has been, in my mind, really foundational and has really given the strategic plan solid roots.
Eva, could I just ask you, how many people attend these four-hour Friday night sessions? I mean, I'm very impressed.
It's been, I mean, I've been so impressed and grateful, too. There, the last Friday nighter, there were about 60 faculty, staff. And then we invited students, people who knew students, brought students in. We had 30 students that we were able to hear from and prototype innovation. So yeah, it's been, it's really a great capability, I think, that we're developing at Long Beach City College. So thank you for asking that. Very briefly, there's four major goals to the strategic plan. And mostly, I just want the board to feel confident that we have really gotten off to a very good start in the first year. One of the most important things, you know, the goal one is all about student success. The goal is innovate to achieve equitable student success. So just some of the highlights. I think you have heard at past meetings that we have identified a guided pathways coordinator. That's Professor Kim Anderson, and she's taking off with that work, which is very comforting. We feel very confident that she's going to work with faculty and really move that forward. I think you've also heard that the college was awarded the California Promise Innovation Grant. This really is going to help with the work of the strategic plan as well. We're going to, with those funds, be able to hire a director of promised pathways to advance that work and also a faculty coordinator of student success teams, which is really integral to the plan where we're really working collaboratively like never before between academic affairs and student support services. Where you have counselors working with academic departments, and then we're bringing other student support areas to work as teams to help students and ultimately cluster it around the pathways that we develop through this work. We've begun to implement an early alert system. The college has tried to do this for a very long time, and that's being piloted. That's another strategy that will really support the strategic plan. You've also heard the Long Beach Promise. We continue to enhance and grow that partnership with LBUSD and Cal State. Also, the equity aspect of the plan is being supported with our student equity committee, but also we're in contract with USC Center for Urban Education. That work will help us with promoting the equity mindedness across campus, and they're working with faculty in a variety of ways. We're beginning to implement our Adult Education Block Grant Plan, Grant Plan. Goal two is about accelerating college readiness, and I know the board has been, over the year, asking for research briefs on a variety of these issues. So you've already seen some of the data, and you will continue to have available to you information about some of our innovative practices around this goal. So it's, we're working towards scaling effective practices in math, English, and reading. Also, the library learning resource support area is also working with the student success teams to be increasingly innovative, to support students when we innovate and try things with acceleration, trying to reduce remediation. Goal three is about building community. So internally, the things that have happened, the student success teams that I just mentioned, the Friday nighters, we feel very strongly has really been very, it's just gotten a lot of input, a lot of excitement, and we've really benefited from a lot of different people across campus who've participated. Externally, in building community, again, the promise partnerships continue to grow. We're very excited. The Strategic Planning Oversight Task Force has deliberately included economic workforce development staff. We're also looking to the work of the Strong Workforce Plan that's being supported from the state and integrating that into the strategic plan, in part in alignment with this particular goal. The fourth goal is investing in people and support structures that directly support the strategic plan. So lots of good work around the college has helped to do that. We see increasingly diverse hiring. You know, the LEAD Academy has really been wonderful in educating cohorts of students. We're entering the third cohort coming up. The new website has been something that is really instrumental to the strategic plan and providing information, easier to navigate information for students and staff internally. We have a business process review that's been well-supported and is continuing on from this year. Technology support, which is part of that business process review. We're also working hard to make the data that is important to, I think, the board in particular in monitoring the progress against the strategic plan. And we're working to have a software called Tableau to make it more visual and easier to access that data. And we have also begun to implement predictive modeling platform by Civitas, and that's also a tool that will provide data, we were hoping, especially for the student success teams, so that when we do innovations, we'll be able to have that data more accessible. So before I hand this over to Lauren Sosenko, our Director of Research, who's going to talk about the targets, I just want to say, I want to thank Lauren for her leadership. She's spent a great deal of time being very intentional and thoughtful and inclusive in developing targets, something that we hadn't really been able to do with our past educational master plan. So I think what you're going to see and hear about tonight, in my mind, really marks an advance with our strategic plan, looking at numbers and not just as numbers or targets that are just sort of, you know, we're guessing at. A great deal of thought has gone into that. So I'll let Lauren explain.
Eva, before you turn the mic over, this is your last Long Beach Community College District Board meeting, and I know I speak for the entire board. Congratulations on your ascension to the Barstow Community College Superintendent Presidency. We're really proud of you. Somebody asked me the other day, how many college presidents have come out of Long Beach City College? And I said, I started naming them, more than any other community college. So you're another one to add to the list, and we're very, very proud of you, and we want to thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you. It's really been my honor and my privilege to, to work with all of you. I, I thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Lauren Sosenko. I'm the Director of Institutional Research. And I'm going to talk to you today about the target-setting effort that we went through this past academic year. This was actually one of the most rewarding efforts that I've been involved with since I've been here. I was able to engage with over 40 different faculty and staff from across the campus around these data to have them help me explain what they mean. But also, they really opened up and had some courageous conversations about what it meant for them in their work to, to move the needle on some of these metrics and to improve student success. And so I really want to thank everyone involved in this effort that we started last fall, and we are going to probably continue throughout the strategic plan life of this plan. And so we, I probably met around 12 different times with stakeholder groups around the metrics this last academic year. And what we talked about was, we looked at baseline data, and those ranged from having two data points to, to more than five different data points and looking at historical data. And the participants would help me describe the context about, well, if we see a dip or we see a rise, what, what does that mean? And then we thought and talked about what would be good targets. What is an ambitious target, but still realistic for the college to achieve in this five-year timeframe of the plan? And most importantly, what do we have to do to be able to see this change? And what does that look like in respect to our faculty resources, financial resources, space, things like that? One of the, this is just an example of the type of information that these faculty and staff groups would look at. So we would look at, okay, what is the, the student count in a baseline year? And how much do we expect that student count to grow? Because it's not really just an issue of percentage increases, but it's how many students are you dealing with in the group you're trying to impact? And we know that we want to make our student groups grow, particularly our intent-to-complete groups. So those are the students who, based on the courses that they're taking, we think they're here for some sort of completion. So over the five-year period, we want to increase that group by over 1,100 students. So even though our targets may only reflect a 4, 9 percentage increase, what that underlying data mean is that our faculty are going to be preparing more than double the amount of students that they currently are to meet the new target. And that's the type of discussion that we would really dig into and try and unpack so that faculty could ask, how are we going to be teaching these students differently? How many new innovative sections do we have to offer to be able to serve this many students? And, I mean, we got down to the, okay, we have 50 more of this, this new English type of course. How many more students do we expect to come out and be transfer level in one year? And that, that's the type of information that our faculty helped me put together to create the targets that we have to present to them. Throughout the conversations, faculty and staff identified probably 50 different, more than 50 different strategies. I, I lumped them into some major categories for us to consider. There was a lot of discussion around marketing. How are we talking about Long Beach City College and the different programs that we're offering to our students, to our community? How are we going to refine that message as we develop roadmaps and start to implement those? And how can that marketing help us increase the number of students who apply and who ultimately enroll here at Long Beach City College? Another strategy is related to the, and a practice, policy, or business processes related to getting students in the right courses that they need. And this was far and above probably the biggest bucket of different strategies that people came up with. And again, this was about developing new, clear roadmaps that help students identify the courses that they need to enroll in to complete their goals. It's about creating a schedule that's really informed by the courses that students really need that are on their ed plan. The next strategy bucket, related to basic skills. So what types of courses are we offering that will help our students who need basic skills intervention to get to transfer level and get there as quickly as they possibly can so that they are then completing college-level work and are on the road to meeting their goals? The next area was around authentic connection, guidance, and targeted intervention. So how do we create a really welcoming feel for students when they first come to Long Beach City College? And also, how do we more quickly identify students who need intervention so that we can help support them to be successful in their courses? And last but not least, of course, when you're talking about what we know, it's what we want to know. So what other research efforts do we want to put in place that will help inform the college as it works towards realizing its strategic plan goals? And one example of that was really knowing how to better inform our students to make better decisions about their course-taking and their, their education. And we were able to even implement that this spring in our Design Thinking Friday Nighter session. So our strategic plan metrics are organized around a framework that we borrowed from Completion by Design. That's actually a national effort that's been funded through the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation that has really influenced the guided pathways discussion across the nation. And it's focused on the student experience. So you start with connection. How are students, students learning about the college? How are they deciding to come here? Their entry into the college, particularly how are they completing basic skills courses and getting into, past some of those gatekeeper courses? Then it's student progress. Are students making progress towards their goals for completion or their goal at the college? And then it's completion. So are students earning a degree, certificate, transferring to a university? And we've added on transition. So we're not ending with completion. We want to know, are they transferring to university? And/or how are they transitioning to the world of work? So we have metrics for that. So I would never normally put this much data up on the screen at you, but I really wanted to share with you sort of the breadth of these metrics. We have more than 20 that help us measure, are we reaching our goals for the strategic plan? This slide presents the metrics that are related, again, to that student experience framework, connection to the college, and entry. So their progress through the gatekeeper type of courses. I want, the, the first column, again, is the domain of the student experience. The second column are the actual metrics. The third, or the third column is the most recent year of data we have. I want to underscore that that's not necessarily data for the 15, 16 academic year, but it's the most recent data we have for that individual metric. The next column is the identified target for sort of a one-year target that we hope to reach for the 17, 18 academic year. And then the last column is the target for the 2021, 22. So that's our five-year target. Some targets may look more ambitious than others. I just want to caution you that, again, we are really looking at those underlying group sizes. And even though it might be a small percentage point increase, it does reflect usually hundreds of students. And in this work, in this, the conversations, there also was some hesitation among the stakeholders who participated in this. I might go as far as say some little bit of fear of what would happen if we don't reach these targets that we're setting. I did my best to reassure everyone that there is no strategic plan police that we know of so far, but that we want to make these a target to shoot for, that we have to have a goal that we're looking towards in the future. And really, what is the most important piece is that we are embracing a continuous improvement culture around the strategic plan, that if we are not meeting the targets that we're setting for ourselves, we really need to be able to have the space to say, why? What is going on? And, and fix it and move forward. That's not necessarily something that many of these stakeholders had felt in their immediate past experience. past experience. The other thing that they had talked about was the need for collaboration, that during setting these targets, that there was no one department or one area that felt like they could do this alone, that they could move the needle on these metrics themselves. And there has been, we know from our discussions in the SPOT group, a lot more collaboration in the recent past. But I think that there's a hunger for even more, especially when you talk to the stakeholders I was talking to. This was not an issue of wanting to stick with the status quo. People really do want to make change to improve student success, but they're trying to figure out, not if, but it's how are they going to do that? The next set of metrics is, again, oriented the same way as the last page. So you have the student domains around their progress, completion, and transition. And I do want to draw your attention to the progress metrics because these are somewhat new, some that we have not really had before. In two thousand and sixteen, the college sent a team of five people to the American Association of Community Colleges, a pre-conference in Chicago, I've got to go. And I learned there, it was about guided pathways, and I really was listening to how they were measuring progress for students that was different from how we've done it in the past. So you see the first row is about the percent of students who achieve at least thirty units in six years. You probably recognize this from our student success scorecard. And we've known for a long time that we do this pretty well. We have about sixty-seven percent, about seven out of ten students earn thirty units from our intent-to-complete cohort. But what I learned in Chicago was that these other schools were trying to really refine and tighten what progress meant. And so when we came back, we decided to integrate a different type of definition and add some progress metrics that reflected that. So what we did is we created a sophomore standing metric. And what we mean by that is not are they earning any thirty units, but are they earning what we believe are the right thirty units to reach their goal or completion? So we define that as earning thirty transferable units with nine units concentrated in one area. And that's the second row of the table. So you see that we go from sixty-seven percent of students who are earning thirty, any thirty units. And when we refine that to thirty transferable units with a concentration in area, we only go, we go down to seven percent. And that's in a shorter timeframe, to be fair. But it really is somewhat startling and telling that if we want to get students through more quickly, we do have a lot of room for improvement and areas where we can focus our efforts to try and increase that sophomore standing metric. We also included a sophomore standing plus, very acutely named. And that's simply earning forty transferable units with twelve units concentrated in one area. And we do that at two time points. So we do that in four terms or two years, and then we do that at eight terms or four The completion and transition, these are more lagging types of metrics for us. So these are longer-term outcomes rather than more of the leading metrics that we have in connection, entry, and progress. And most of these are pretty traditional metrics that we have included in the past, with the exception of some of our transition metrics. And you might notice that there are some space holders there for one-year targets. During my conversations, many of the stakeholders felt uncomfortable making one-year targets for some of those metrics because they believed that the effort it was going to take to move the needle on those metrics was going to take longer than a year's time. So they, and they were actually quite reserved in what they wanted to put as a target for five years, because many of these metrics are actually happening once students leave the college. And they felt that there are many other factors that will impact whether a student is successful in some of these metrics that we can't control. I actually feel like this is an area that we can continue to develop in the coming years, because I think that there's actually quite a bit of good work happening at the college around strengthening our connections with employers and with the workforce, the strong workforce efforts that the college is investing in right now. So we probably will want to revisit this, but I just wanted to give you some context for how, the rationale for how those targets were proposed. So where do we go from here? We are, I have provided these proposed targets to the SPOT team and to our college planning committee, and the strategies that the stakeholders have come up with to help inform their year-two implementation plan of the strategic plan. And my office in institutional research and effectiveness will monitor the metrics annually and actually continue to have these conversations with different stakeholders to help discuss our progress and also necessary refinements as it's needed.
Okay. All right. I have a couple of questions, but how about the other trustees? trustee Kelleb?
I'm not going to, I have questions, but I can probably do it offline unless this gives you a golden opportunity to promote something. The biggest one that is that professionally, as of conversations, I work in these areas, but I rarely acknowledge that as a trustee because my role as a trustee is very different from my professional life. But I have to tell you that what you are doing here at Long Beach City College makes me really proud because with planning documents and people that know me, they've heard, planning, good planning works. If you do planning, you follow a process. But the important step is exactly what you're doing here, and that's implementing, going out and making sure, it's just not a pretty document, they can check the box for accreditation, and said, we've done it, and walk away. It only works if you follow up, make sure it's implemented, and doing all these steps that you're doing. So it really is, it's remarkable in the sense that not everyone does it, we are. And then the, my question was going to be this on the Friday Nighters. I don't know what you're doing, what you're offering. I probably don't want to know publicly what you're doing or offering, but to get people to do that is a tremendous credit to this institution that people want to do it, but also to all of you who are putting the effort in. Because, again, a plan is only good if it's followed and implemented and then cross-checked and making sure you keep doing the steps you are doing right here. And so my compliments to everyone over in our institutional research, to putting a document not just together, but to actually follow up and these next steps. So you can tell me, Karen, what you're offering on Friday nights, if it's you or it's somebody else, and maybe professionally I'll steal that idea, but my compliments. It really is impressive what we're doing. And the goals you have set and talked about are critical. Those goals are achievable. They're absolutely essential to this institution moving forward, especially with some of the goals we set. There used to be, it was supposed to be a funny line in a movie a long time ago. The line was, "Seven years of college down the drain." Everyone laughed because no one's in college seven years, and yet you've watched the creep that's taken place for a multitude of reasons at a community college and trying to bring that back to a reasonable number to help students move forward. Those are all commendable. And so I just wanted to say my thanks to everyone on your efforts. And the efforts are going to make a difference, and we're going to be a better institution because, so, thank you very much. And Eva, congratulations to you. If everyone remembers, we got Eva from Barstow College, so she's essentially, she's returning home, for lack of a better term. But anyway, congratulations and a well-done on the presentation and what we have here with the strategic plan. Thank you.
I also want to add that the two photos on the current slide are from our Friday night event. So you can see the level of engagement and also the number of people in the room.
What's on the tables? I don't see alcohol, so...
Looks like water. Okay, trustee Addo.
You know, I can remember when we, flashback ten years ago, when we started talking about how great it would be to have a process whereby we could see whether people would complete, be engaged, and how ultimately impossible it seemed. Not only was there a culture that said, "Education is different," you know, if I heard it one time, I heard it twenty times that people would say, "Yeah, remember when we said our goal was going to be increased transfers and then the University of California stopped accepting our students? And so how could we ever meet that goal? And so how could we ever establish a goal? Because they can be wiped out by externalities that we have no control over whatsoever. And if you're going to measure us that way, what you're opening the door to is performance funding and all these things that we're scared to death of. And I believe that the culture here was, great idea, impossible to do. And so we started, and we had some good ideas and we put them together. And I believe we've really started to change the culture about what happened. People said, "Oh, well, that's interesting." But when, a year ago, you guys came out with this plan, I read it and I said, "This is inspired." You know, this is, this is exactly, not only that we could do, but, you know, I wrote these words down as, Eva, you in particular, were making your presentation, and then Lauren as well, "Open, engaging, courageous, evidence-based, nuanced, community-building, barrier-breaking, beautiful." And the amount of engagement that you've achieved at this college would have been impossible as recently as just a couple of years ago. You've involved everybody in the doing of this, and you've, it's transformational. It's absolutely transformational. And I see, you know, that it's possible. I'm not saying that it's absolutely going to happen. When I looked at these metrics first, I said, "Whoa." You know, are we sure we want to make those kinds of commitments? But yeah, I think we do because it will help us come together as an institution. I particularly want to salute you, Eva, because you've been the force behind all this. We're so sorry to lose you, except that we're not, because you're going to be in another place doing this kind of work in an inspired kind of way. So congratulations, let's just make it happen.
Thank you. I just, still, you know, I've got such a wonderful staff. Two of our research folks are here right now. I mean, they're the brains with Lauren, behind all of the data, and also the whole inclusion aspect of what's happened. Karen Kane, I mean, I've learned so much from her, but it's been an honor to be able to work on this. And I look forward to seeing these targets met and exceeded, I think, as I'm staying in touch with all.
trustee Ballou.
First of all, I know this isn't your going-away reception, Dr. Bags, but we certainly are going to miss you and we wish you the very best. And I think it's apropos that you would present the strategic plan at your final meeting. It was just very well planned, so thank you for that. And, you know, both of you guys always, Lauren, you guys always do such a great job. Thank you. I really look forward to your presentations. I have one, two really quick questions you can probably answer on the fly. The Adult Education Block Grant Plan, what is the amount of the grant? And who does that encompass as far as adult? I'm working on a project with adult education in my district, so I just want to know if we can work together or if that's exclusive of a particular project that you're doing?
No, I mean, there is, as you know, there's funding from the state, and we had a planning grant a few years ago. And now we do have a director of the adult education at Stephanie Lewis under the Academic Affairs. So I know that she is piloting Summer Bridge for this summer. And really, we're just growing that program. So as you know, when there were budget cuts, you know, that programming was really decimated. So the idea was to create more collaborative in the community. So Stephanie is working on that with the Long Beach Adult School, and there will be other partners, I'm assuming, that she will bring on board. But this is really the first year that we've just started to do that work. She's partnering with other departments that do offer basic adult education, but it's been very limited through funding. So we really look forward to that as, you know, the community, there is such a need for that. So Stephanie and faculty and others are working to gear that up. And I think you'll be hearing more about that. The college planning committee recently got an update, so if the board wants to hear more, certainly, I think that would be...
Is there an amount?
That was your question. I'm not positive. I think it's one point some million.
And it's allocated just for, you know, the kind of re-entering adults' Summer Bridge program? It can't be used for other adult? I think Dr. Peterson wants to say something to that.
The amount is, we've received 1.7 million per year, and we're in our second year. And that grant is also to develop non-credit courses in certain areas.
And it's a consortium, so it's a partnership between Long Beach Unified School District as well as Long Beach City College.
So we couldn't extend that opportunity to adults that are not a part of that program already? Where's Miles? Poor Miles, I always put him on the spot. So Miles and I will be meeting about this later in the week. I just want to know because, you know, why reinvent the wheel if we already have an existing program?
I believe they're working on growing the program, so it's very timely that you asked us and get more information. It's my understanding that the Adult Ed Block Grant has very specific ways you can spend the money. So there's a focus on English as a second language, which is what we currently offer under this grant. And as well as there's other sort of areas that you can focus. So I know citizenship types of courses is another area. We don't currently do that, but that's one. And then there's education for parents of young children so that they can learn to communicate better with their children's schoolteachers and things like that. So there are a number of different types of courses, that non-credit courses you can support with this. And I know that Stephanie Lewis is really in the planning phase to try and ramp this up.
Okay, got it. And my last question is, I'm fairly familiar with the reading and language proficiency levels, but I'm not familiar with the math. Can you just explain to me, maybe with an example by levels, what the difference between transfer-level math and college-level math is as far as the years? Because when I think of transfer-level math, I'm thinking the eight-hundred level classes? Is that what those are?
So the transfer-level math are any math course that we're offering that is accepted at the UC/CSU system. So they are higher-level math courses. And so then there are a number of them, so they're like, if they're above the math forty...
Like twenties or thirties, okay.
Then one level below that, we have what we term a college-level math, which is Math 130. And so for, the reason why we included it, we had originally started with just transfer-level math, but a number of our stakeholders said, you know, "A lot of our students are coming here and they're not intending to transfer to a UC or CSU. They want an associate's degree here." And the math level that would be required to get that degree would be Math 130. So that's why we've included that as a separate step. And then we have Math 110, which is a level below that, and then two more math levels below that.
Got it. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you both. Really good job. Thank you.
trustee Zia? No? Okay. I have two questions. First of all, you mentioned several slides back about early alert. Probably twenty years ago, we used to hire students to call people who missed two classes. The teacher would call into the counseling office and students, is that your strategy? Because I didn't understand why we ever got rid of that idea, just saying, "Your teacher misses you, please come back." And I know it was money, I know that, I know.
No, that's exactly what it's about. So there's a software tool, and then there's processes and practices that are being developed by an implementation team. But it allows faculty to identify certain indicators, behavioral indicators, that would raise concern that there might be problems for the student in succeeding, so that the resources can be contacted. Students can see a counselor or whomever, depending on what's being noticed, to help that student intervene early on before there's an issue.
And how are you reaching that student? Because if you tell me you're calling them on the phone, they're not going to answer. I hope you're texting them.
Greg, do you know a little more about the Starfish?
The system allows for multiple...
Context?
Context. So email, phone, text.
So it depends at what level.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, second question, and this is in the slide and you might have to go back to it, where it's under connection. Okay, right there, the top one. Percentage of students enrolled at LBCC within one year of submitting an application. That blows me away, but I have to tell you, it is in line with the number of people who attempt to apply for a scholarship and the ones that do. Twice as many people attempt as actually apply for a scholarship. So have you looked into why, or is there not a way to find out why these students did not enroll?
No, we have not specifically asked that question. We have a number of punches. We know that it's actually, people might laugh at this, but easy to apply to Long Beach City College. It doesn't cost anything. So unlike a university, people are not shelling out 50 or 60 or more dollars to apply. So we know that students are going to CCC apply and they're applying to many different schools at the same time. So that pool is very large. And in fact, I think there are about 10,000 new applicants that we're pulling from. So our, the intention there is we do want to expand our research to better understand what, why are some of the reasons that students are not, they are applying, but they're deciding not to come to Long Beach City College? And then help that, let that inform our marketing efforts to try and encourage them to consider Long Beach City College as their first choice.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, one quick question. Just, is there a relationship between the information that you guys are providing and the Equity Scorecard? Are you, is that integrated into your data at all?
Yes, we provided the data for the Equity Scorecard. I smile because we have every intention of building a dashboard here that will allow for all stakeholders to drill down and ask those questions around equity, around every single metric that we have, to look at differences in how students are attaining success by ethnicity or by special group that we've identified in our equity plan as being a group that's experiencing disproportionate impact. And in fact, we provided the data to the Q group who have been using the Equity Scorecard. And we insisted, they were actually going to have their own, but we insisted that they use our strategic plan metrics as their scorecard. And we drilled down for them so that they had the data that was aligned with these metrics so that we were all talking about the same outcomes.
Okay, trustee Otto?
Yeah, just a quick point. I remember not that long ago when we did the miss, with USC did this missing, I forget what the number was, 87, right. Students, what they did was they went out and they interviewed people and said, why didn't you come back? And we got some answers and we developed some things to do as a result of that. What is remarkable to me is the sophistication of the technology that we now have to do that same kind of work without having to go out and interview people and to get ways to say, okay, what are the specific things we're looking for and how do we most effectively do that? And we've got more Spaniards in our toolkit to be able to do that. That's just increasing on a regular basis.
President Mastor, I also want to echo the remarks that you guys and my colleagues have made. Eva, we're going to miss you. I know, again, as trustee Malauulu's mentioned, this isn't necessarily a goodbye, but I know I've had quite a bit of questions when I first started and then throughout the years. And you've been very graceful, you and your entire team, so that's a testament to your leadership. And I really wish you well in Barstow and please do come and visit us here in Long Beach. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, 4.3 sabbatical report, and Karen Faulkner is going to be introduced by Academic Senate President Karen Kane.
Thank you, Board President Baxter. I am pleased to introduce Karen Faulkner from our Business Administration Department. She teaches at the International Business Program. In addition to teaching, she develops enrichment activities for the students such as internships, tours of the Port of Long Beach, videotaped mock interviews with local executives, and job shadowing with international business professionals. She participates and takes an active role in educational technology projects and has spoken at several conferences such as Tech Ed, the League for Innovation, the Chancellor's Office, and the Society for the Advancement of Management. So I'm very pleased to be able to introduce Karen Faulkner to the board. The floor is yours.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I too appreciate a lot of what Lauren have done. And in Business Administration, we also ask ourselves how we can continuously improve. And one of the things that we found is that students respond a lot better to images. The other thing that we found is experiential learning is imperative for retention. So my sabbatical project was looking at, was an online hybrid class for Introduction to International Business. And I thought, instead of showing you a PowerPoint, I'd show you the actual deliverable, thought that'd be a little bit more. So hopefully it'll come up about soon, so I goes. So there were actually two goals. One was to align the curriculum in the IBUS I class, the Introduction to International Business, with the Certified Global Business Professional. So that those students who want to obtain a credential, they can show an employer, a prospective employer, and say, look, I've matched with this body. No, instead they connect to that. That's something that some other colleges, including XAMN and a college, have done. So in lieu of more theoretical material, I actually changed the textbook to a how-to kind of book. The challenge with a how-to book is it doesn't come with any of the fun quizzes or the power of anything that you would get in a textbook. So the other part of the project was creating all of those materials. So over the course of the sabbatical, I developed 126 quiz questions, five exams, 17 interactive exercises, 27 to 15-minute fully captioned videos, two surveys, and 31 discussion forums, four module goals, and 19 chapter objectives. And I wanted to show you one of them. I think most of our online classes don't have videos. Some of them that do might be a little bit more, in the past at least, a lot of the talking head variety. So I want to get away from that and make it as practical as possible. Welcome to Chapter Three, Harmonized Codes. Please be sure to read the chapter before going further in the video, as this discussion will start. So perhaps an E there as we scroll down. But hopefully you get the idea that there's a lot to look at. So perhaps an easier way of approaching it would be to use the Schedule B search engine. So let's take a look at that. And this will give us an opportunity to type in. Vote Fender. And let's see. So you'll see right here that you can click within the video and actually go to the material. So I thought that was more useful than looking at a video and then attempting to perform from it. What we come up with. Now, as we said, we know they're made out of rubber, so we can clarify it a little bit further and type in rubber. And voila, here's our Schedule B number. And since you'll be asked for that in the homework, you may want to jot it down. So the Schedule B number that we're going to use for exporting boat or dock fenders is this one. Analyze a market in depth as a potential market for bike. And surprisingly, the feedback on that was very, very positive. Let's say that you're importing boat fenders. Let's take a look at that. Where would you look? Well, as we said, you'd look in the harmonized tariff schedules in the United States, which is managed by the Office of Tariff Affairs and Trade Agreements, within the U.S. International Trade Commission. So let's see where we might find boat fenders. And you'll notice that this too is extremely detailed, probably not a big surprise there. You can see all the various chapter headings. Okay. Now, we could do the same thing we did with the Schedule B and try to figure out the appropriate chapter and go from there. Or we could also type it in the box and see what we come up with. Okay. And is it the same number as for exporting? And the answer is yes, yes, it is the same. So boat fenders, unlike. So I wasn't specifically looking for feedback on the class per se, but I wanted to see what the students found interesting and found challenging. So I asked them, towards the end of the semester, those very questions. And some of the feedback was surprising in that it was so positive. So I wanted to scroll down some of those comments, assuming that I can find them quickly. There we go. I think this is confusing topics. Actually, in the interest of the time, I'll just read them to you. So some of them said, this has been one of the most forward and structured online classes I've ever taken so far. I found a lot of the forum topics to be interesting. And then they go on from there, what was interesting, what was confusing. A second one said, let me say, I've taken a few online classes before, but your class has been the most thorough and thought-out class I've ever taken. So thank you for being such a good online professor, because I can't begin to tell you, and I won't read the rest of the sentence, but they found other classes challenging. The last one said, I found this online international business class to be extremely informative, definitely one of the more challenging classes I've taken, but I enjoyed it very much for that reason. First class to have video lectures, which I love, made the class more personal, and still gave us a little bit of your personality, I guess, that shows off there. So one of the questions in the sabbatical report was, what did you feedback? So obviously, there was the deliverable, but above and beyond that, some of my colleagues have said, how can I improve my class? And I felt really good about that because I was able to sit down with them and say, look, you know, here's how you can make it really engaging, here's how you can embed some of these statistics up here. In addition to this, there was a little bit more as part of my sabbatical project. I actually went to Spain to look at, I didn't say I was going to do this, but I went to Spain to look at Zara, in that I went to Ecuador to meet with a garment manufacturer because I wanted to do more experiential learning. So after coming back, I actually talked with one of my colleagues and with our deputy secretary of management to see if we could maybe do a project more experiential sale to see about drop, shipping, market structure, how that works. And I was really pleased that my, that time colleagues, that class has already jumped on that subject. So I thank you for the opportunity to do that first.
Karen, wait, in case there's some questions, board members?
I don't have a question, I just want to say that Superintendent President Romali made a comment that this was very comprehensive, a lot of work that went into it. Those names, those were student names to the right? And those are live, that's a live recording of what was happening? That's amazing. Just, I mean, the software involved to be able to do that. And your work was very obvious. Congratulations, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
President Mastor, I just, I also wanted to thank you, Karen. Seems that you've put quite a bit of hours into this work. And I have to tell you, it's one of my favorite parts of our review and our job is to look at these sabbatical reports. I learned so much, it's fascinating. Is there a way we can kind of go in, is there like a YouTube or social media that it's kind of broadcasted? We could check out some of these online excerpts that you have listed here, or, because I know you logged in.
I can send you the link.
Sure, that'd be great. So we can check it out, it seems fascinating. Thank you so much, Karen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Veteran Services Office. Vice President Peterson.
I'd like to introduce James Martinez, representing our Veteran Services Office this evening. Hi. Been a couple of years since I've been over here presenting to the board. I'm going to digress a little bit. The first time I was here was when I was a student and the student trustee was my best friend and he asked me to cover for him one time, which was a really bad mistake. I ended up falling asleep and that's how I first met the Board of Trustees. They were actually nudging me.
Who was the student, James, you were covering for?
His name was Daniel. But this is 18 years ago.
Oh, okay.
I look fairly young, but I'm.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and I've stood before you all maybe five years ago, six years ago, talking about EOPS. So this is the third time here, I'm very intimidated and I'm going to get on with it. Okay, so this is the new Veteran Services Office. I'm going to give you a quick update as to what's going on in our office, what we've been doing this past year, but also trying to let you know what's going on, what are the changes and what are the needs that we have, how you all might possibly be able to help us, or just so that you know who our population is. Now, the actual history of the Veteran Services Office is quite rich. If you, if I ever get to corner you during like a coffee break, I'll eat up 45 minutes an hour worth of time just telling you what the history is. We have been in this space now, which is in the lower level of the E building, for the past three years. Before that, we had a classroom and my office was behind the elevator shaft in the E building. It was a 10-foot by 6-foot space, yeah? And I could hear the elevator going all the time. So this is, this was a great, great improvement. So this picture here is just the office, just to give you kind of an overview. This is when it's quiet, this is when it's slow. When it's slow, there's a dozen people there studying, there's a dozen people there working. When it's busy, there's about 40 or 50 students all crammed in there, trying to do their work, trying to talk, trying to relax. Okay, so a quick overview of what our students look like right now. We have 803 identified veterans. It's not sufficient enough to simply call yourself a veteran, you kind of have to prove it and we cannot take that for granted. So 803 individual students have come down to our office and have clearly identified themselves as veterans. 82 of them are utilizing, are dependents who are utilizing some type of benefit. 656 of them are utilizing a GI bill. And if at any point in time you all have questions, please interrupt me, because I'll just keep talking and talking. And right here, that'll just give you the kind of the breakdown between genders and what their educational goals are. As you can see, the majority of them want to transfer. A lot of them are interested in getting an associate's degree and transferring. Because of the nature of the GI bill, we actually do recommend that they transfer, not necessarily receive an associate's degree and transfer unless they can do an AST or AAT. And right there, that's more for me, the fun fact, so I can remember to tell you all. So these 656 veterans are utilizing a GI bill and they receive some type of federal stipend to come to school. So in this past year, they've received $6.8 million of federal funds that are essentially being pumped back into the community strictly from their GI. Any questions? Good?
That's it?
That's it? Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, no, no, that's not it. I'm just asking. No, 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 questions, sorry.
I'm ready to pounce, James, I'm ready to pounce.
No, no, I'm going to keep going, yeah, I'm going to keep going. All right, cool. All right, so here's the big thing with us. This is our office. The Veteran Services Office is technically a financial aid office. We're not funded federally, we're not funded by the state, there's no mandate saying anything. Actually, the only mandate that says that, for every certified individual using a post-9/11 GI bill, we are to get $12 in funding. So that's $12 times 640,000 students, which is nothing, absolutely nothing. So technically, we're all just employees under financial aid. I'm a financial aid advisor, my compatriot Rochelle Ross is a financial aid specialist, we have a, we have two financial aid counselors. And we repurpose as needed. Right now, we don't have a director per se, we report directly to Frank Menjivar, who then reports to Lillian, who then reports to Robin, hey, Robin, who then reports to Dr. Peterson. Currently, it would take about $245,000 to fund our program and we are utilizing every single resource that we possibly can to do so. We aren't always able to carve that out of financial aid, because again, we're essentially taking away from financial aid resources in order to maintain our office. We have applied for a number of grants, we have utilized Triple SP, we've utilized equity funds, anywhere and everywhere possible in order to make the program run. Right now, the brunt of it is being handled by myself and Rochelle Ross, but even that is a relatively new concept. My position didn't exist until three years ago. It used to be that one person and one counselor handled 600 students and they made it work. And we made it work. And then I come from a long tradition of people who make it work. And I'm very proud of everyone that came before me. Three years ago, my position was created as a half-time position. And then eight months ago, my position became a full-time position. And we started adding other counselors as we got the funding. That's kind of why I'm, we're dashed out like that, because the funding. That's kind of why I'm, we're dashed out like that because the funding isn't necessarily stable. So the only funding that is 100% stable is Rochelle's and our part-time retention counselor and our part-time academic counselor. The retention counselor was just filled recently, by the way. His name is Kevin Benitez, and he should be starting in about two weeks. Okay? Okay, I'm going to move on. All right, so the standard services that we offer at the VSO. We offer general services that are related to utilizing the individual's GI bill. They come in, we give them an orientation that is unique to them. They need to know everything that they can possibly know about their GI bill. It is very, very complicated. We try to break it down for them as easily as possible. Every individual that comes through our office is usually eligible for two or three GI bills, but the way the federal regulation is written, they can only use one. And usually, when they use that one, they give up the other two. And that's a very tricky and dangerous kind of scenario to be in. So we have to orient them on what are all the benefits or are there all the detriments? What might work out best for them? We offer a great deal of academic resources there. We offer a safe space for them to be in, a place to study in, a place to utilize computers, printing, faxing. Faxing and scanning is actually surprisingly a really big deal for them because the VA works off of technology from 100 years ago. So they still rely on faxing. They still rely, they don't even like scanning. Scanning to them is a no-go. So surprisingly, our fax machine is busy all day. There's hardly a time or hardly a day where we don't use that thing a dozen, two dozen times just to be faxing information to, to the VA. We certify the GI bill. Obviously, that's one of our main, our main priorities. They all receive priority services of some, some kind or another. Priority registration, priority, priority enrollment, priority evaluation of their transcripts. And that has to do with the regulations with the GI bill. Priority services as far as counseling goes, we try to make it so that our counselors are 100% available to them. We also have an outpost at PCC. Now, at this time, approximately 11% of our population is only at PCC. 12% of our population takes classes in both places. So technically, 23% of our population would need some type of service at PCC. And for the first two years of me being down there, we had none, absolutely none. But then we got, I got together with our supervisors, with Dr. Peterson, with Frank, and now with Robin. And we are trying to expand our services over there. We identified precisely what it was that we needed immediately. We needed someone there just to answer simple questions. We needed someone there to start directing them to the appropriate resources. From there, we have branched out. We, we are now sending myself over there at least once a week. We're going to start sending a counselor over there as soon as we identify what day would be the most useful for them. Not to say that that is all that we want. We want more. We always want more. But that's true at LAC, it's true at PCC. And, you know, if we could find a way of making space appear out of thin air, if we could find a way of maybe making $300,000 appear out of thin air, then, then we would love to expand further. And that is obviously going to be one of our goals, but a very long-term goal. We would need to hire someone brand new. We would need to get a space at PCC. It's all very complicated. But that is a goal nonetheless, to let you all know. And here's some, some highlights. The Veterans Club is a very, 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 very active club here on campus. They like being a part of Long Beach. And every year, they change up. Every year, they change up the 20 or 30 people who are actively in the club. And every 20 or 30, or every 20 or 30 students will have a different idea of what it is that they want to do. So some of them like to engage in more volunteerism, which is what you see there. They're building a house for Habitat for Humanity. We've partnered with them to build several homes in the area. Some of them like to do more physical activities, like going on hikes, going on waterfalls. One of their favorite things is going on hikes and waterfalls. They like to hit up all the places in Malibu. Some of them just like hanging out, barbecues, punk shows. They're really big on that. They like, one of them is, has their own, has his own band. So they go and they follow him. They tour, they tour with him, which is nice. In Spring Olympics, oh, some of them are also our work-study students. And there was a loophole in Spring Olympics that would allow us to utilize them for that. So financial aid enrollment services really enjoyed them at that point in time, as you can see there. Also, by the way, that's Rochelle Ross, who is not able to be here today. Rochelle Ross is right here. She is a huge part of the Veterans Services Office. She makes sure that the students feel welcome and they feel comfortable. They meet with her one-on-one, or they meet with me one-on-one as soon as they come in so that they know that there's always going to be a friendly point of contact for them. Okay. So expanded services at the VSO. Now, this really happened as soon as we found space. So I'm going to kind of machine gun through this. I'm going to go through it as fast as I can because there's a lot of services that we expanded through, all largely due to seeing that there is a need with the students. So first and foremost was academic counseling. And that is one of our standard services. That's true. However, when we realized that we needed more academic counseling, it used to be a ratio of 1 to 600 students. And that is not sufficient for what they need. The, the federal guidelines for creating an ed plan are a little more hectic, a little more specific for the GI bill. So we needed very intense counseling. We got two more. Seems kind of simple, but now the ratio is better. Now the ratio is one for every 200. And now, at this point in time, a student can walk in and have an appointment two or three days later. We can have a new student come in and the process for enrollment is 24 hours anyway. And we can tell them 24 hours, you get your student ID number. The next day, you take your assessment test. The next day, you see a counselor. So there you go. We streamlined the process as much as we could. Transition counseling is a big part. We are branching out to the other Veteran Resource Centers of the CSU's, UC's, private colleges. And we're getting them to come in and do transition counseling for us. VA work-study, we are allowed to hire our work-study through our own VA account. And in that accord, we have an unlimited budget. We do utilize that sparingly, though, understandably. However, it used to be that we had four people working for the office when we worked inside a box. Now we have 25, all doing something different. We have tutors. We have clerical staff. We have mentors. And that's probably the biggest portion of that. We have individuals who are there and they connect with eight or nine students. And that's all they connect with. That's all they do. And their entire job is to make sure those eight or nine students don't drop out, they don't become homeless, they don't go hungry, they stay in college with someone to talk to. We have workshops, at least 16 a semester. The most we've ever had is 52 in a semester. We do workshops with all the different resources that are available to them, to the veterans, I mean, in the community. And it goes over a variety of subjects that we are not able to address immediately. We actively take field trips and college tours to other universities. We try to do at least three a semester. Two public institutions and one private. That's usually our goal. One CSU, one UC, one private, and try to mix it up. We stay away from Cal State Long Beach and Dominguez Hills, mostly because they're going there anyway. We try to expose them to places that they have not yet considered. All right. One of the bigger issues that we had was that there are simply concepts that we are not, or services that we are not properly trained or prepared to service students with. I'm not a social worker. I'm not a psychologist. I'm not a counselor. I'm not. I have an English degree. That's what I did, right? So we started reaching out to the community, or, and vice versa, the community started reaching out to us. So we created a number of MOUs with other organizations. So even though technically in the office, there are six people, well, there's technically two people in the office and four people in a different office elsewhere. Even though there are six LBCC employees, we actually have closer to a staff of around 15. It's just, we have all these other individuals that are coming from outside resources. So the biggest one, Vet Success on Campus. We are one of 94 colleges nationwide that were picked to have a representative from the VA be inside of our college. And we were picked for two reasons. One, because we have the population. We are massive. We are one of the largest populations in Southern California. Two, we are actually one of the model colleges for our Veteran Resource Center in the state of California. So that has helped out a great deal. We have an employee of the VA that is in office three days a week, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. So it used to be someone came in and said, I didn't get paid. It used to be someone came in and said, I need help with my medical benefits. And I said, awesome. I will wait on hold with you for the next four hours while we contact Oklahoma and hope to get someone. Now, all I have to say is, awesome. I will walk five feet to the next cubicle, and there is Lois. So that has been, been huge to us. The LA Vet, now, we told the VA, that was great. We love having someone there three days a week. I want more. I want someone there four days a week. I want someone from VA there five days a week. And after quite some time of badgering, they said, okay, we will send you someone else from a different department, LA Vet Center. It is still a department of the VA who now comes for that fourth day a week. And I will continue to badger them until they give us someone else for that fifth day. We also have Strength and Support, who is an outside nonprofit counseling service. They are largely family therapists, but they are, they also engage in psychotherapy. They are there in our office three days a week, and they offer counseling services to our students. We have an MOU with USC, School of Social Work. So we have a social work intern in our office. And again, we had students that would come in and say, I'm homeless. They'd come in and say, I'm hungry. They'd come in and say, I need a job. And we would try to help them. And we would stay with them six hours, seven hours, eight hours, contacting shelters, trying to figure out where to put them, trying to figure out how to help them. But we just weren't properly trained. And again, because it's not anywhere near our, our job description. So we saw that need. USC needed to fill, fill some interns. We offered them an MOU. It worked out beautifully. And so now, we have been successful in getting multiple students into homes. We've been, been successful in getting multiple students off the streets. We've been, been very successful getting students into rehab clinics, finding jobs, getting support that they need. We also have an MOU with US Vets. They send us a psychological intern every, every year. Very similar to Strength and Support, they offer psychological services. So we try to have it so that we have someone from the VA there at least four days a week. We have psychological services there at least four days a week. We have an intern there to help with any type of social work events, two or three days out of the week. Okay. Any, I'm not done yet, but any questions so far on those services? No? Just going to keep going. Just going to keep going. Okay. So this is our highlight reel. So every, every year, there are a number of events we absolutely positively try to do. And there are a couple of newer events that, that we have hit as well. One of the events in the fall semester that we try to do is a resource, is a resource fair. We invite anywhere between 20 and 30 resources from outside, La Mesa College and the community to come in and produce a fair for our veterans. So that's, that's some of the pictures you see there. This is the beginning of the, of the fair on, on the outside. We're gathering up students. And over here is where they go into the E-Building. We also actively engage in the Veterans Day Parade. And those are the majority of the pictures there. We actively engage with the Board of Trustees. They love walking. They love marching. They also look very, very cool. And their, their T-shirts are very uniform. And this past fall, it was the first time in 15 years that we had a veteran stand-up, a homeless stand-down here in the Veteran Stadium. It had last been done, like I said, 15 years ago. But it had been done when Mike McCollum was still part of Financial Aid, and he was very passionate about it. And after that, it was an issue of funding, and it was an issue of time. Rochelle Ross found the funding, and it became her, her pet project. She guarded it. She was proud of it. She did an amazing job pulling it together. We got a variety of resources from all over the community. We got people to come in to help with housing. We got people to come in and help with haircuts. We gave away food. We serviced, we serviced close to 600 veterans that day. We, we housed approximately 65 veterans that day. And it was, it was an amazing event. We intend on finding the funding to do it again. We may not be able to do it next year because, again, funding is, is a big constraint. We're going to aim to do it at least every other year, every year getting bigger, every year getting a little bit better. And in the spring, and in the springtime, there are a number of events that we do here as well. We try to bring awareness into the 22 Boots Campaign, which is bringing awareness that 22 veterans commit suicide on a daily basis. We attempt to do a university fair, a transfer fair, which we did. I mean, it was, it was successful. And that occurred a couple of months ago. And then what just happened last week was Memorial Day, or rather, earlier this, this week. But we did set it up. We plant flags across the field. We ask all the veterans and the faculty and staff to please give us pictures of everyone that they have lost that was in the military. We blow up their pictures. We put it up. We remember them. We feed everyone so we can get everyone out there and get it 100% free. And, and that's what it looks like. Later on, we will be participating in the US Vets 5K, 10K Walk and Run. I walk it. The veterans run it quite exuberantly. And that's, that's the gist of it. Does anybody have any questions?
Trustee Otto?
Yeah. Are you guys a member of the California Community College Veterans Caucus? Have you joined that?
We are not, no.
It's cheap.
As a, as a college, yes. Yes, we've joined.
Okay, good. Thanks.
We haven't, then we haven't engaged. Okay. Yeah.
Is that it? Trustee Malolo?
First of all, thank you for being here. This and the next report are, I requested to have you guys come out and just share with the community what we do to support veterans. So I, I really appreciate you being here, especially with Memorial Day having been yesterday. So thank you. Couple of things. A couple of years ago, there was a lady who was on campus who gave an awesome presentation in the L Building. I believe, I don't remember her name, but I believe she was the highest ranking doctor in the military. And she gave a presentation to staff about PTSD. Does anybody remember that? She was amazing.
It was through USC.
It was amazing. Can we bring her back? Or is, is that something? Because I attended as a faculty member, but, but I think it's so important, especially now with the work that you are all doing. The information that she gave was phenomenal and just to equip our faculty and staff with the tools needed to identify students, student veterans who suffer from PTSD and how we can modify some of our lesson plans. You know, I, I had a student who, when I was teaching embedded reporters, she, she kind of had a little panic attack. But I, I recognized that that was happening, so I let her go outside. But the same student told me that she had failed a history test. The professor wouldn't allow her to step outside when, you know, they were covering the Gulf War, which she had served in. So if, if our staff, if our faculty is equipped with that information, I mean, even if we can do it on an annual basis and have that, I think that would be just critical to the support that we offer. So please try to bring her back. Also, the 22 Vets a Day, that, I don't know if you were here when we did that, but I took my journalism students out there and we launched that whole hashtag Twitter on campus. And I gave students extra credit for retweeting it. And I think you guys got like maybe 5,000 hits within an hour just from the hashtag 22 a day with the photo that we took. So let's use the social media now that we've got so much social media on campus, not only for that project, but for your club, for the club. Let's get, you know, sponsors and activities and support. And if we can extend what we do off-campus and get more veterans on campus, get more community partnerships for them, it's a win-win. So, you know, consider using social media that way. And the last thing is Rochelle Ross actually was a recipient of an award this morning at the PCC Student Life Awards for her service with the Veterans Club. So I was kind of hoping that she would be here this evening. She wasn't at the event, the luncheon today, but please let her know in case she hasn't been notified that she did win an award today for Student Life. So thank you. Thank you for your work, and congratulations.
Trustee Zia?
No? Okay, just a couple of things, James. First of all, probably most of you do not know, but James, beautiful hair. He donates for children for...what's it, toupee? For wigs for children with cancer. And I think what a wonderful testament, James. And you are a wonderful person to do that. I'm sure it makes you feel good, too. So he's on his second round. That's why it's short now. I also want to remind you that in the LBCC Foundation, there is a family that gives $10,000 a year specifically to help veterans. And one of the things, when I was involved, they bought the computer and printer at the Pacific Coast Campus. And the Veterans Office used to be only at the Pacific Coast Campus. And so, and we've also helped through the...helping the homeless fund that Trustee Zia and I are on, helping a homeless veteran student get furniture for their apartment. So there are services that we just need to remind you that we are there, and we want to help because...and again, I retired. But at the end of the year, I would write to this family and say, "I want to tell you what you did." And when they saw all the things that we had done with their money, that keeps the money flowing, because people want to feel needed, and people want to feel, you know, "Oh, this is a great thing." So their mother started it, and the mother is no longer with us. And every year, one member of the family donates $10,000 in honor of their mother, which I think is really a nice thing. So keep that in mind. I have no idea how much money's in the fund now, and if it's been accessed. But it's only for veterans. So nobody else would have taken the money. So you might want to check with the Foundation Office. And then, the last thing is someone who does not work at Long Beach City College told me that the Saritos Veterans Office is much better than ours. And I said, "I find that difficult to believe." So why would they make such a comment?
Well, first, every college is very proud of their institution. We have, in our plans for the renovation of the E-Building, new space. So, you know, we, as James mentioned, you know, space is a premium on campus as we're responding to student needs. We've been able to find a larger space. We continue, as the program, successful to grow. And so we're looking at how do we accommodate that in the new building?
I'm confused. We're going to bring Saritos' program here?
We're going to bring their students here.
There you go. That's what we want. And then lastly, I should say that this office is just doing an incredible job. But one of the things that this Veterans Fund paid for was bus passes. And so what Rochelle Ross did is she got all the students to fill out the applications. And normally, it takes six weeks to get the bus pass. You probably don't want to know this. She drove them to LA so they could get that bus pass. I hope she did this, because she told me she couldn't do it. Don't answer, James. And so that they could get the bus passes. And I think things like that, just little things, they could all take the blue line up there, too, show that we really care. And we're very grateful for our veteran students. And I hope that, you know, you let the students there know that we really appreciate them and thank them for their service.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, James. 4.5, student leadership with participatory governance structure. Oh, and after this fabulous presentation, we're going to take a three-minute break before... Okay, I was trying to warn...
Eric wants to mention the break before.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you. So first of all, we're going to be speaking to you all about, you know, student participation and, you know, our engagement so far within the last year. This work does not reflect everything that's been done in the past, you know, before years. We've had some great student leaders come up through various programs and institutions here at the college. But we definitely wanted to highlight some things that we've been able to participate in this last year. So student participation, student engagement. It's cited in Assembly Bill 1725. So that was created, you know, back in 1988, or the Walter Stearns Act. And we're cited in that, students. And we're involved with, you know, a variety of things, whether they be increasing student fees, you know, anything that might relate to student engagement, things like that, we're a part of. Students ourselves call it our nine-plus-one rights. You know, Academic Senate probably familiar with that with their 10-plus-one rights as well. And this is Eric. We have to introduce ourselves, I think.
So moving on to the ASB structure, also, we're going to kind of talk about the different components of ASB. So the executive team consists of six members. It's the student trustee, the ASB president, the LAC VP, the PCC VP, the treasurer, and the secretary. So those are kind of like the main officers. Along with them, there is four other elected officers, which is the LAC and PCC Club Senate President, and as well as the PCC and the LAC Cultural Affairs Chair. The PCC VP oversees the PCC Student Council and the LAC Club Senate, again, and the PCC Cultural Affairs. They oversee both, Club Centers on both campuses. Currently, we have over 60 student clubs compared to about a year and a half ago, two years ago. That's a great number. As we used to be really low, we went down to about 45 clubs. And we reached an all-time high, I believe, two semesters ago, where we had 72 clubs. So some of the internal operating committees that we have here, I'm just going to touch upon some. If you feel free to want to know more information of any single one, please make sure to ask. So we're going to talk about the college services, the CSC and Barnes &amp; Noble Committee. So what they're mainly concerned about is promoting the CSC stickers and talking about certain grants that Barnes &amp; Nobles are giving to them. Also, the CSC sticker, as many of you know, funds athletics, performing arts, dance, The Viking, the actual newspaper, and all the program and services here at the college. The next committee I will move on to is the Sustainability Committee. And we have our sustainability rep here today, Shannon Trussler, the audience. It focuses on the efforts to reduce the carbon footprint on campus, also as well as raising awareness of innovative ways to be more sustainable. Moving on to...oh, wait, excuse me. Moving on to the Finance Committee, mainly in charge of all the money here on campus. It's in charge of all the recommendations and reallocations, budget transfers, and funding to the ASB Cabinet. And it's also in charge of ASB grants. This year, I think we approved 10 grants for 10 projects that are being done by certain departments and student-led clubs. So we're excited about that. Moving on to the LAC and PCC Cultural Affairs Committees, just promoting the diverse campus that we have here at Long Beach. We all know that we're really proud on how diverse this college is. And we'd like to promote different cultural events throughout the year through these committees. And then the last two committees is LAC and PCC Club Senate. Like I mentioned before, they oversee the 60 clubs here on campus. They keep the clubs informed with on-campus events and make sure that any events that they plan are successful. And then, reaching to the ASB Cabinet, it's the main governing body of all constituencies. They're the larger structure of the student government. And they always contain a representative from each of these committees that sit on ASB Cabinet. Any questions so far?
If I can highlight a few things. I just want to let you all know that sometimes we talk about associate student body or student leadership here at the college. People think of us as a group of individuals. Maybe it's about like 10 to, again, as I mentioned, the ASB Cabinet being 16. I want to highlight that this is not just our organization. This is a fragmented, just a piece of what we are, student life and student leadership. We provide, as we mentioned earlier, we provide an opportunity for, you know, sometimes up to 200 to 300 individuals to get involved and develop leadership skills in various capacities. So ASB Cabinet, you know, if an individual wants to apply, as if we have the application process going on right now for a year-long position, there are a multitude of other ways for students to get involved within our organization. And again, there's some outside of our organization, which we'll highlight next. So our shared governance committees is kind of what we talk about when we talk about getting involved with, you know, the campus life outside of associate student body or ASB. So academic hiring, you know, some of us have sat on various hiring committees. We're tasked or asked to sit on various ones. I know there's a few that we're hiring right now. I myself have sat on three now. I was fortunate enough to sit on the LBCC superintendent-president hiring committee, which was a great experience for myself. I also sat on our dean of CTE, which was just great to see. And I just want to highlight a few things about that is that when I was going into it, I didn't really know what to expect in a hiring committee. You know, when I think of hiring, I think of applying for a part-time job, and it's one interview, and I have like a one-page resume. But I didn't think I was prepared for having an extra one-unit class to look at 30 resumes, you know, and sometimes they're 30 pages each. So I think when we look for individuals or students to sit on those various hiring committees, make sure we're highlighting that it's kind of going to be a commitment. That's not something we really train our individuals for, which we're looking into. I know Eric has sat on a few before. If you wanted to share any experiences in that?
Yeah, sure. So I sat on one of the committees for the, I believe, the Student Activities Advisor position. And like Alejandro mentioned, it really equips you with a bunch of leadership skills and a bunch of professional work skills that you can use in the future. Kind of being on the other side of a hiring committee, being able to ask those questions, knowing what to expect, knowing how to act in certain things, have really had an impact on me and equipped me with certain skills that I can use in the near future.
And so you see right there a list of committees that we are asked to sit on. We do our best to attend every single one, and it's not just myself or Eric. It's, again, a number of individuals that attend these committees or these meetings frequently. There might be a few that we didn't highlight in there. But for the most part, you know, we try our best to be representative at every level of decision-making. You know, I sit on the Auxiliary Board as well. I've sat on that for, I think I've sat on it for about three years, actually, since my very first. So it's really awesome to see, and I've seen such great work. The Calendar Committee, I sit on with Greg and a couple others here in this room. And I've really gained a lot of experience, really kind of seeing where my role as student trustee kind of differed as to what I originally intended to be, intentioned to be. You know, I think I wanted to make these changes from a managerial perspective. But it was really awesome to see that all these changes are happening, you know, in different committees, and they have their own decision-making bodies and their own representation as well. I've seen a lot of representation, not only from the board, but from faculty, staff, administrators here at the college at every level. And that's really awesome to see, and making sure that students are engaged in that is our goal. So the appointment process?
Yeah, so moving on to the appointment process, as we all mentioned earlier in the meeting, that we just had elections. So as of now, the next cabinet will be looking at compiling a list of all the active committees that need student representation on them. During, usually during their spring training or their first couple of meetings in the fall, they will decide what student members will sit on certain committees. If vacancies occur after, say, the first three, four weeks, it's the ASB president can appoint anyone he wishes to those committees. And throughout the year, we consistently get emails asking for students to sit on hiring committees or other committees that haven't been heard of in a couple of years. And the process goes through the ASB advisor. And we always tend to find a student who wants to sit on it. And we think it's great that we consistently have new requests coming in for students to get more involved and participate in shared governance.
And just the last thing that he mentioned, you know, where we get requests from individuals to have students sit on various hiring committees or various constituent groups. I've really seen a change from my perspective, a change in the last three years, where at earliest, when I first started, you know, in student government, I mentioned three years ago, it was kind of sort of a little bit reactive, where there would be changes made, and we would be the ones going out. And then, not to say administration wasn't kind of being proactive, but it was kind of our turn or our responsibility to be the one searching out. And in the past few years, we've seen a complete switch, where, you know, administration here of the college, faculty, staff contact us before they even have those meetings to make sure that we're present at every step and every level. And that's really been a huge impact and a huge improvement that I've seen and, you know, will continue to see in the coming year. So the next one, we talk about outreach. So we talk about how we get involved with students. You know, I think Trustee Malauulu has mentioned many times that there are a lot of events here at the college, and sometimes we do our best to get the message across. But sometimes the message isn't relayed clearly, or it isn't in a way that students can sometimes engage with or see on a daily basis. So we've seen a lot of improvements at the college website. You know, if any of you have been on the website the last week, you saw a little blurb or a little thing about ASB elections. So we've seen a huge improvement about our student life events, our student engagement events. Right there, if students went on the LBCC website, and they actually got an email as well. So that was awesome to see. You can see some links about how to get involved with student government. You know, you can see individuals that are applying for student government positions. As we talk about being representative for all students, we want to make sure that we're seen as well. And the next one is we're really big on social media. So if any of you have followed our social media, we have Facebook. I think we have like two Facebook accounts, Instagram. Do we have Twitter? I'm not sure. Yes, we have a Twitter. I don't have a Twitter, so I'm not very social media savvy. But our Instagram is, I've seen it multiple times, and that's just a little list, a little blurb on maybe two or three days' worth of activity. We're always posting our agendas, posting our flyers for events. We share events that aren't only our ASB events. We share club events. You can see right there, a dessert party that Fivehead Akappa had on Tuesday, May 16th. There are always a bunch of events that are happening here at the college. And if you want to be most up to date and don't want to receive, you know, an email every day or every other day, social media is where to find us. We do our best to be a part of that. And then, yeah. So statewide participation. So something that we highlighted a little bit earlier is that there's opportunities for students to get involved at a statewide level. We highlighted a little bit earlier during the day where we talked about the Student Center for California Community Colleges. It's the Statewide Student Government Association. Currently, we have two individuals that sit on there from Long Beach City College. That's myself and our former ASB president, Dal Ramula. It's a body made up of 37 students from across the state of California. So out of the 2.1 or 2.3 million students, it's 37 individuals who are impactful and kind of helping out with the Chancellors' Office, sitting on various constituent groups in that sense as well. I myself sit on the Chancellors' Office Consultation Council. So that's where I see Doug all the time. And then, I thought Thomas would be here, but he also sits on Consultation Council. So we're up in Sacramento monthly, talking about, you know, the processes that are happening locally and providing our perspectives that's representative to some various constituent groups. Doug as a Triple CT, myself as a student. IAPI Advisory Committee, so these are all committees that we've sat on at the statewide level, students here at the Long Beach City College. Triple SP Advisory Committee, their last meeting is actually June 8th of the year, so we won't have a student president because it's commencement. Financial aid, regional representatives, Dal was in, he was in, I forget, not Modesto. He was in a random city, Monterey Bay, which is not a random city. It's beautiful. But he was in Monterey Bay a few weeks ago, helping out with the statewide financial aid, regional representatives, so making sure that students are available there. Common assessment initiatives, that's going to be impactful to the college here. I've been involved with that for two years, so I've been in their bimonthly meetings for some time now, and the students and statewide organization. And we're really looking forward to dramatically increasing our representation at the statewide level, and not only here at the college, but our local level, community-wide. Recently, we passed a $2 student representation fee, which is an optional fee for students to pay into, like their parking fee. They can easily opt out for any of the reasons. If any of you have been, oh, not any of you, because I don't think any of you are students, but it's pretty simple to, for any individual that does not want to pay that optional $2 fee. But the student representation fee is specific, where we can only use it for students here at the college to be available and to help represent themselves at local, statewide, and again, community-wide, and it seems the national-wide as well. So students will be hopefully going up to Sacramento maybe a semester, once a year, to do like a lobby day, things like that, being a part of those discussions. Because I've been with some lobbying efforts here at the college and with the district, and I've really seen it firsthand, what the changes can be made. And I want to make sure that students, and we all want to make sure that students are able to do that in the future, and we can provide a sustainable resource for students to continue doing that even after our terms end. So the last one is some progress being worked on. So there are always constant improvements for student engagement and student leadership and student life in our ASB organization. The first one that...
So over the past couple of months, there's been talk within the Publicity Committee as well as through ASB about creating a monthly or a bimonthly outreach to students via email. So as many of you know, we do get those org notifications to our email, but we feel that that's not enough, because it only targets a small student population. If we had district-wide emails that we could send out to both faculty, staff, and all students of the college, we feel we'd have better turnout at all our events and more students being more aware of what's going on on campus. So that's something that for the next ASB Cabinet, we really hope that they collaborate with the Communications Department to hopefully establish some kind of system to get out a monthly or bimonthly communications report of any events or any activities that might be going on on campus.
Yeah, and with the new website that's happening, it's going to be rolling out in the near future. We're really excited to hopefully to be a part of that as well. In the last year or two, we've seen an improvement in our ability to share out information, but to also be seen for students. If any of you go on the LBCC website and scroll to the right, there are some helpful links right there, like the College Scorecard, the Strategic Plan, I believe, and some other links. But there's one right there where it talks about ASB and how to get involved. And it gives them a direct link to our generic ASB or student life page, where students can get our contact information, and students can know how to reach out or who to reach out to if they have any questions. Another one that actually was a great idea by Vice President Peterson was incorporating committee chairs into ASB summer training. Because some difficulty that we have is trying to explain, and I'll go back to a previous slide. You know, when you see our shared governance committees, it could take us a day or two just to cover the material that these committees work on. And then incorporating chairs into our summer training is something that we definitely want to look into, and that was a suggestion by Vice President Peterson. And we're definitely looking forward and hopefully planning that once we decide when our summer training will be for the new incoming cabinet, to make sure that, you know, committees just don't stop, you know, over the summer. Decisions aren't stopping just because we're not here at the college. We want to make sure that students are aware of that and participating in those committees, even during the summer if they can. Accountability reports for our participating students. We want to make sure that students that are attending those meetings are attending them regularly, actively participating. We're training them to be efficient leaders and effective leaders, and not someone that we talk about, you know, sometimes a stigma around student participation that sometimes they'll sit in a room, or sometimes they'll fall asleep, or sometimes they'll doze off. And that's perfectly fine, because I do that sometimes, too. But we want to make sure that at the most of the time, they're being effective and relaying the information back to us. Another one is anonymous comment or suggestion feedback page. There's a level of comfort that, just for me, with sharing any negative comments or any positive comments that involves or surrounds anonymity. We want to make sure that students aren't afraid to come to us at meetings, and if they are kind of a little shy, or don't want to express their concerns in a public meeting, that they have the ability to share it in an anonymous way, we can track back as well. And we want to make sure we provide that support for students, to make sure that their voices are heard, whether their face is seen or not.
And just to echo off of what Alejandro mentioned, I think it's imperative that we do focus on any feedback that we may get from students, as we are here, not to serve ourselves, but we are here to serve the students. So we can ask the questions, how can we better serve you, what you feel we can improve. So that's something that we really look forward to making progress on. Moving on to the academic renewal policy, I know Vice President Gable and Dr. Peterson have heard of this one from our PCC Cultural Affairs Chair. So currently, here at Long Beach City College, for those of you who may not know, academic renewal allows you to remove a semester from your transcript, and so it could just basically be wiped. The problem with that is that it has to wipe the whole semester. Say you got three Fs and one A, it'll have to wipe the A as well. So we're looking at other colleges and also their structure and their policies on their academic renewal to better fix our, because the thing is, other colleges have it so that you can pick and choose what classes you want to get rid of, rather than just wiping the whole semester as a whole. So we look forward to, hopefully, within the next semester, possibly look at the colleges' models and implement it here at Long Beach City College.
The next one, some progress being worked on, is we talked about student transit pass program, we talked about, you know, purchasing passes and things like that. We've been in talks maybe about two years now, and I've been involved in the discussion since its inception. But this idea of a student transit pass program, we went back and forth, looking at data from other colleges, you know, Mount SAC has an MOU with their foothill transit, Santa Monica College has an MOU with Big Blue Bus. We want to make sure that we're looking into services that might not be available right now to students, and planning that as well, and looking into a variety of topics and a variety of services that can better meet the needs of our students. So we're looking into that and still working nonstop about that, making sure that students involved are in discussion. And if I'm not here for those discussions to continue, we have individuals that are prepared to take up the rings. And when students, you know, jump into a committee, we never want them to hold back the progress, we want to make sure that their understanding of the content, which might take a little bit of time, especially here at the trustee level, took a little bit of time to understand the content and all the acronyms and things like that, it's not very student-friendly, I'll say. And we want to make sure that they're understanding how to translate that language into a way that is, resonates with students. And the last one, and it's not the last one, because there are a number of things that we work on, but ones that we wanted to highlight is the Truth Initiative. So the Truth Initiative is a grant, I'll read the goal. The goal of the Truth Initiative is to gather feedback from students, faculty, and staff in regards to LBCC smoking policy. This is a grant that students, that a student here at the college applied for, and Camille, our advisor right now, can talk a little more about that at a later time if any of you are interested. But they've been, they've been working into looking at the smoking policies here at the college, you know, with the ultimate goal for the Truth Initiative specifically is to see whether or not the college can go smoke free. Whether or not the decision is made, you know, depends on our constituents, our community here as well. But that's the Truth Initiative, there's work being done around that. And then, so I wanted to express the opportunity to thank you all for giving us a chance to speak to you all about some of the work that we've been doing here at the board. I think maybe about two years ago, when I was not a student trustee, but also involved with student government, I think we wanted to give a presentation on our involvement with attending a conference. And we kind of had to do that during the president report, and it kind of wasn't really an agendized item. But to really see that we've made some progress in not only the community, but here at the trustee level, to make sure that we have an opportunity to speak and provide some updates as well, is just a great achievement for us. We want to thank you all for the opportunity that you all give to us, and thank you all for coming out to our events, you know. We have, how many, I don't know, an event probably like every day at this point, every semester, we have at least a few a week. And I never see, I always see your faces there, present, whether it be early in the morning, whether it be in the evening, you know, I'll see some of you at our banquet on a Friday night, which, it's a Friday night, so it's definitely not in your work hours. So thank you all for, you know, committing to us in our student life and student engagement. We have an event today, it's happening until midnight, just chiming that out there, in the student union. Feel free to stop in, we're done at midnight again. But some of us will be there, so any support is definitely appreciated.
And just on behalf of the associated student bodies, I as well, just as Alejandro, would like to thank you all. But I would also like to give a big shout out to our ASB advisor, Camille, because without her, we wouldn't have been able to do everything. So a huge thank you to her. She's always supported us and always made sure that everything was in store, that we were on track with getting everything done that we had to get done. And lastly, just wanted to thank all the student leaders here at Long Beach City College. Also, as many of you know, we have a Viking volunteer program, and this past year, we recorded 18,000 community service hours as a college. So, yeah, we want to thank everyone for all the participation in any events and just being student leaders. We thank you for listening to us.
Thank you. Thank you, Alejandro and Eric. And good luck next year, and I'm sure you're preparing the new cabinet to follow in your footsteps.
Any questions? We prepared for very tough ones.
Okay, trustee Malauulu's ready.
I have a bunch of questions. No, 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 no. I would like to thank you both very much. I know the hard work that you guys have put into making not just the semester with the school year a great success. You two have really dedicated a lot of time. It's noticeable, thank you very much. I would also like to thank Camille and let her know how much we appreciate her guidance and leadership. Both campuses really appreciate what you do and definitely benefit from it, so you are definitely a credit to our college. Javier and Jorge have very big shoes to fill. I don't want to intimidate you, but you guys have a tremendous example of student leadership, and I'm pretty sure that you guys are up to the challenge, and that you will step up and continue the great work that these two gentlemen have started. And I think, probably through Camille, I think I've asked several things of ASB throughout the year, and everything was met and accomplished, and you guys came through every single time, and I'm just really impressed. You're busy, you're students, you work, you have a life, and you guys still managed to come through and deliver. So I personally thank you. Just keep up the great work wherever you guys are headed, I know you're going to Cal, and Alejandro, you're going to let us know, but keep up the great work. Thank you very much.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Oh, trustee Otto.
Do you guys have a club, like a baseball club, that could help out with, since Clayton Kershaw seems to have imploded, and Mike Trout's hurt his hand? Is there a student club for that?
No, but you can start it, if you want to be...
I'm sure you can.
And we call ourselves a dynamic duo, in case...
Oh, very good, okay.
Not surprised me either.
Okay, that's it, thank you. All right, next is the consent agenda. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately if a member of the board trustees so requests. I'm asking this now, so if there are any areas, then Michelle can work on removing them while we take a three-minute break. Are there any items that anyone wishes to remove? Oh, boy, then we're not going to have a break, Mr....
To approve the consent calendar with the...
Second. Okay.
Exception? All right.
Yeah, trustee Kellogg has approved, and trustee Zia has seconded to approve all items on the consent calendar.
I thought it was the rest of the calendar.
The rest of the agenda.
No, just the consent calendar, trustee Otto. Just number five. Okay? No discussion? Can we call the roll, please?
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Okay, excellent. Human resources.
That was a quick three-minute break.
Yeah, we'll go on to...
Well, she doesn't need to make any changes. Oh, yeah, we'll keep going. Okay, human resources. That the board of trustees adopt the changes edits to the Equal Employment Opportunity Plan for 2016-19.
President Baxter?
Yes.
Can I just make an announcement? You just approved the consent agenda, and on that consent agenda, we have the resignation of Dr. Mona Lisa Hassan. Mona Lisa's in our office, in our... In our audience, thank you, Doug, in our audience tonight, and she's been so patiently waiting, but I wanted to acknowledge the great work that Mona has done over the last couple of years. She's been tremendous as our Director of Classified Human Resources. And I want to acknowledge, here's another person moving on to greater heights, she's moving on to the Vice President of Human Resources at Santa Barbara City College, so not a bad place to go, Mona, so congratulations to you. And thank you so much for everything that you've done for us in the classified service here at Long Beach City College, so congratulations.
I agree, congratulations. Keep us posted on, and when you get to the college presidency, you got to let me know so I can add you to the list. Okay, thank you, Rose, for that.
At Santa Barbara, it's all about repeatability.
So I need a motion. Okay, trustee Malauulu?
This is for item 6.1?
This is for item 6.1.
Second.
And, okay, it's been moved by trustee Malauulu and seconded by trustee Zia. Is there any discussion? Hearing done? Okay, vote?
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Okay, 6.2, Equal Employment Opportunity Fund, Multiple Method Allocation Model Certification Form, Fiscal Year 2016-17. We need a motion.
So moved.
Okay, moved by trustee Otto?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kellogg. Are there any comments? Okay.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Okay, employment contract, and this is 6.3.
So moved.
This is the employment contract, Paul Creason?
That is correct. Moved by trustee Otto?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kellogg. This is the employment contract for Paul Creason. Is there any discussion?
Board President Baxter, just as a reminder, you need to read out the terms of the contract before there's a vote taken.
Okay, and...
It's the new guideline, so each time we have an academic employment contract, you're going to have to read out...
Thank you. And you know what? I signed it, and I need that back so I can read it out.
Oh, actually, if you go to 6.3 on the docket, if you read out recommended action, and then the public content, you've covered it.
Oh, just this one thing?
Yep.
That the board of trustees approved the employment contract for Paul Creason, dean, health, kinesiology, science, and mathematics as submitted.
I thought the regulations required you to read the entire contract.
That's what I thought, too.
No, just...
That's a joke.
Well, I can read this.
Oh, okay, thank you, Doug. Remember, no.
The employment contract, boy, it's only eight o'clock. The employment contract provides for a term of employment from July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2019. The contract provides for a monthly compensation of $12,599, health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments? Call for the question.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Okay, 6.4, employment contract. I need a motion, and then I read it. Or do I read it and then need the motion?
Motion first.
Okay, so trustee Zia made the motion, and trustee Otto seconded, and that the board of trustees approved the employment contract for Oscar Lee Douglas, dean, language arts, communications, as submitted. The employment contract provides for a term of employment from July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2019. The contract provides for a monthly compensation of $11,428, health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Are there any comments or questions? Have a call for the vote?
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Okay, 6.5, employment contract.
So moved.
Okay, moved by trustee Zia?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Otto, that the board of trustees approved the employment contract for Hossam Kashu, director, instructional technology and distance learning, as submitted. The employment contract provides for a term of employment from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2019. Contract provides for a monthly compensation of $10,480, health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Are there any comments or questions?
I just want to say that Hossam is, just like all the other folks that we've approved, is a very valued member of our family here, and want to congratulate him for his contract, and congratulate our staff for bringing this forward.
Excellent. Okay?
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Okay, employment contract, 6.6. Need a motion?
So moved.
Okay, moved by trustee Kellogg, seconded by trustee Malauulu. Are there any questions? Okay, that the board of trustees approved the employment contract for Randy Totorp, athletic director, as submitted. The employment contract provides for a term of employment from July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2019. The contract provides for a monthly compensation of $10,480, health and welfare benefits and life insurance.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Okay, 6.7, employment contract and stipend. I need a motion?
So moved.
Okay, moved by trustee Zia?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kellogg, that the board of trustees approved the employment contract and stipend for Michelle Grimes Hillman, dean, academic services, as submitted. Employment contract, the employment contract provides for a term of employment from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2019. The contract provides for a monthly compensation of $12,599, health and welfare benefits and life insurance. An additional $881.93 monthly stipend shall be paid the period of May 2nd, 2017, through June 11, 2017, for the purpose of assuming the position of interim dean, social science and arts, pending an internal recruitment hire for an interim dean. Any questions?
Why is it internal?
Because I think it'll probably be faster, is that not correct?
It's only for an interim assignment at this point.
Yeah. Deana Humble went to Minnesota.
I know that.
Okay. By the time that we'd have to advertise for the position and everything, that's why we need...
This says pending an internal recruitment, so she's going to be the director for, are we only looking internally to hire this person?
Correct.
Michelle Grimes Hillman is only serving as we engage in internal recruitment for interim dean, and then we're going to take the time to hire for a permanent position.
Yeah. Okay, good question. Okay, any other questions? Okay, Madam Secretary?
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, 6.8, employment contract and stipend.
So moved.
Okay, moved by trustee Zia. Seconded by trustee Malauulu, that the board of trustees approve the employment contract and stipend for Margaret Antonio Palomaros, assistant director, Cow Works, as submitted. The employment contract provides for a term of employment from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2019. The contract provides for a monthly compensation of $7,844, which includes a $374 per month longevity stipend, health and welfare benefits, and life insurance. Plus, there'll be a stipend. The assistant director of Cow Works will also receive a stipend as follows. Club advisor, ladies of Athena, spring 2016, $270, and fall... Are these dates correct?
Yes, they are.
Okay, and fall 2016, $270. Are there any questions?
I do have a question. Why are the dates from last fall?
I can only assume that they got it to us late. They're, you know, slow on the sort of uptake of paying those stipends.
So does this require us to retroactively pay, or to compensate maybe for... I don't know what the correct term is here, but Edward, we would call it time in lieu if they'd already worked it but hadn't been properly paid.
As a stipend, you pay it when it gets submitted.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, 6.9, doctoral stipend for Dr. Reagan Ephraim Amali.
So moved.
Okay, moved by trustee Zia. Seconded by trustee Malauulu, that the board of trustees approve the doctoral stipend for Reagan Ephraim Amali, Ph.D., as submitted. Per the board-approved Management Professional Development slash Evaluation Personnel Plan, management employees who hold the doctor... degree receive a doctoral stipend in the amount of $187.50 per month. Are there any questions?
Does anyone want to just explain this, because it's sort of odd? Congratulations, you've been here one meeting, you're getting a pay raise. It was... I know we've had discussion prior to this about why we're doing it, but the fact is, we have a contract with our superintendent president, which is really, all things are considered. So I know we went back and forth about how to do this, but just for full disclosure, what was the thought process when we finally came to this conclusion? Because when we come with... We only have one employee that we, as a board, work with. We do a separate agreement that we take into consideration all the compensation, and then bundle it. And so when this came up, it was one of those, okay, why didn't we already deal with this? So if you want to just... You want to explain it? I mean, I went through this explanation with everyone here on the board, and I said, whatever you want to do, but it seems a little awkward.
So in the Management Professional Development slash Evaluation Personnel Plan, there's, if you would, if you will, sort of generic language that says that anybody who's a management employee who has a doctorate receives that. So just from that perspective, reading the language, and therefore, who would apply to? Dr. Amali is a management employee. If the board has an interest in revising that language so that we exclude for the future the superintendent president, then we can certainly look at that. But we were looking at it just from the surface, as to what the, you know, what the language tells us, and therefore, who qualifies under that language.
My point was, this item, this contract came forward, and I wish everyone would have told the board as we were doing the contract before, and then we would bundle it all at that one time.
Well, I have to say that we were not involved in the design of the contract, so we had really no idea what was coming forward.
Oh. And I wasn't involved either, so... You hired the lawyer to negotiate the contract.
I didn't hire the lawyer.
Well, the college did. I mean, I'm...
Yeah, I think it's something that our outside consultant was directly involved in, and I think it was one of the big issues, was that it would be independent from our staff, internal staff. And so I completely agree, and I think it's absolutely great that we're in the spirit of transparency, bringing this forward, just like any other doctoral stipend. So I thank the staff for doing that.
Madam Chair, I would just like to echo what trustee Kellogg brought up, too. When I saw that on the agenda, I thought it was strange myself, and we can't be the only ones. I understand how the contract was negotiated, and I do think that, you know, it's almost comical to add $187 a month to the existing contract, and by no means is that any kind of, you know, spar on you at all. But I think the process definitely should be reevaluated in how that works. I also understand your position from HR, where, you know, legally, you are bound to follow that rule. But since we had already negotiated this, you know, very comprehensive contract, I think the fact that the doctoral degree is already included in that should have kind of, you know, perhaps negated the additional sum that the college would pay on top for that degree. It might only save a couple of thousand dollars a year annually, but it is a couple of thousand dollars in addition to the contract. So I do agree, and maybe as a board, we can talk about ways to fine tune that. It's not a huge amount, but it's still money.
Yeah, I just have to say, you know, let's be mindful that as a board, we... It's... I think this is kind of unique circumstance, but out of fairness to staff, we were very clear that we wanted autonomy and, you know, kept, you know, as a matter of segregation of duty. So it's incumbent upon us as board members to perhaps do a more rigorous job in checking with staff in case we missed any kind of nuance or procedural aspect and not completely over-rely... I'm not saying that was the case here, on our outside consultant, because our consultant may have not been aware of this. So out of defense to staff, I think it's prudent for us to perhaps, 20 years down the line, if we go through this process again, we look at it that way.
Let me assure you, in the next contract, 20 years from now, we'll remember. Yeah.
Years.
How about 30 years from now?
30 years.
Should you decide that this does not work for you for whatever reason, I am completely okay with that. We negotiated in good faith, and I'm happy to honor that, very happy to honor that, and just delighted to be here.
I think out of the spirit of fairness to all doctoral staff, we need to honor our commitment. So while I appreciate, I'm sure, I don't want to speak on behalf of the rest of the board, I think we need to be fair and honor our process. Call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, Human Resources Personnel Commission. 7.1, Personnel Commission Annual Budget. Do I need to read this entire amount, too, also?
No.
No, okay. But all we need is either that we concur or we reject. So...
Motion?
We need a motion? I don't see action, but...
But we concur. Yeah. Motion to concur.
Okay, motion to concur?
Second.
Okay, so, motion by Doug Otto, and seconded...
Sunny.
...by trustee Zia. Okay, ask for concur. So we're voting yes to concur.
I just have a quick question, and I don't think there's... Maybe Mona Lisa can respond to this with the Personnel Commission, but just wondering, they recommend a budget to us to approve, or we stipulate the budget parameters for the Personnel Commission to work with?
I think legally, the way that it works, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of the way that it works is that they make a recommendation to us, and we concur with that recommendation or not.
Yes, at the initial inception of the Personnel Commission, there was an allocation made by the board of trustees to the commission. It's a rollover budget, which some adjustments for step and column. The operational remains the same, but yes, it's a recommendation. It goes through a public hearing through the Personnel Commission, and they accept it, approve it, and then we bring it forward to the board of trustees. And then it goes to the Los Angeles County Office of Education for finalization.
So in September, when the board sets the budget, we send it over to the Personnel Commission, and the Personnel Commission works with that budget, and then they shoot us back. Their recommendation got it.
But I think the final approval is with the County Board of Education, isn't it?
They don't really approve it. If there was a disagreement between what the Personnel Commission approved, and say there was a... You didn't concur with the budget, then they would be the mediating party to reconcile that difference.
Got you. Okay, thank you, and good luck.
And by the way, their budget with the increase, that we're asking the... We... The college is asking the Personnel Commission to take on a lot more tasks. There's some assignments you have this year that are going to be critical as far as with salary. I don't know if I'm using the right terminology, but they've got some very important tasks in front of them in the next 12 months. So, you know, I always say, if you, we as a board, want to take on those responsibilities, so be it, but they do a lot of heavy lifts with that commission.
Okay, Madam Secretary, call the roll.
It was just a concurrence.
It was already voted for concurrence?
Concurrence.
Okay.
Do you want...
There was a motion to take a run.
But there was a motion, we have to vote on the motion.
Sure. Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Do you need to know who made... It was... The motion was made by Otto, seconded by Zia.
I got that, though. Thank you.
Okay, Academic Senate, Karen Kane.
Thank you, Board President Baxter. I present 8.1, Distance Learning Courses to the board.
So moved.
Okay, moved by trustee Otto.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Zia. Is there any discussion? Okay, Madam Secretary.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, 8.2, Course Additions to General Education Plan A.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Otto, seconded by trustee Zia, that the board of trustees approve the addition of Anthropology IV, English 34, English 53A, Geology 10, Journalism 10, Math 21B, to the General Education Plan A. Any questions?
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, 8.3, Removal Repeatability.
Do we just have a very quick explanation of this, because it's a...
Absolutely, after we make the motion.
So moved.
Okay, trustee Otto, seconded by trustee Kellogg. Now.
Since 2012, we have had to remove repeatability for courses in the area of kinesiology, dance, music, theater arts, and sub-disciplines within those. And the thought was that we were moving students through in a more efficient manner, and they only need maybe one unit or one try at one of these courses. There are instances where that is not the case, like in some of the orchestras or symphonies, where they do need more than one attempt. But Michelle Grimes-Hillman, who's sitting in our audience, along with our curriculum chair, Ken Hillman, and a lot of our deans, have worked with our faculty very hard in the last few years to make sure that we were going to be compliant with Title V. There are some instances where repeatability can be maintained, but the courses that you see on this list are some of the final courses that are now having their repeatability removed because they did not meet the... Some of the requirements of... Or ability to keep repeatability on those particular courses.
And I'm confused, and if we remove repeatability, does it mean they can't repeat them, or does it mean they can?
That means they cannot, so they get one try at the course.
Seems kind of like an enrollment management move to keep them open.
It was very painful for the disciplines that had to go through this, but when we all understood the reason why, what we were trying to do for students was to move them through efficiently, and that our degrees and possibly certificates only needed one instance of the course, then people were more amenable to adjusting curriculum.
The rarefied world of higher education. So, and just because... And my apologies, the repeatability, when this hit us and all the community colleges, it really... It was troubled waters, and it caused a lot of aggravation. This was four years ago, five years ago.
2012. Mm-hmm.
Years ago. And the ironic thing is, we, as a governing board, were... It's just typical of the season we were in right then, but we were blamed for a lot of things. We had no control on this at all. This was an action for the board of governors, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm glad that we're addressing it. But on the second item with... And I'm... I think I understand, but just I'll ask the question on intercollegiate athletics. They really... Because they only have so much eligibility in intercollegiate athletics. So I think it makes sense, because they don't get to say, well, I'm going to keep playing for four or five years when their eligibility is limited.
Right.
Is that why that one's on there? Am I reading that correctly?
Are you looking at K-N-A-1-A-D? Is that the course you're talking about?
I'm looking...
P-E for the physically limited?
I'm looking at my head or cells on... I'm looking at my agenda item details on intercollegiate athletics.
Oh.
District policy may designate courses in intercollegiate athletics as repeatable. So to answer Doug's question, that is, it is allowed to repeat.
Yes. So that was an exception to the repeatability rule, because our athletes are some of our most regulated, and so we have courses that they can take up to four times, which will get them through a course, you know, a two-year season.
Two-year eligibility.
Yes.
And the other reason I was fine until I heard trustee Otto's question, and I heard the response, and I was looking at that going, no, that can't be on those, but...
No, it's... Yeah, that's one of the exceptions.
And again, thank everyone, I know this is not an easy, but for it to go through, as all these items we're dealing with, with the Academic Senate going through the policy procedures, governance, to address these sometimes difficult issues. So I appreciate it, and thank you for the explanation. I think trustee Kellogg was worried that if we had a really good quarterback as a freshman, he couldn't play as a sophomore. And we didn't want to do that.
Yeah, intercollegial athletics, we're excluded from that for those types of reasons, and also the necessity of fielding a team.
That's a good point, though. I'm glad you brought that up, Doug.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
New and inact... New and inactivated degree and certificates, that the board of trustees approve the certificates and degrees effective fall 2017 as submitted. These certificates and degrees were created or inactivated to meet Title V and industry requirements, to respond to advisory committee recommendations, and/or to facilitate transfer. The certificates and degrees were developed or inactivated and approved by their respective college departments and schools. Documentation has been reviewed by the Associate Degree General Education Subcommittee and approved by the Committee on Curriculum and Instruction.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by trustee Kellogg.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Otto. Go ahead.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, Administrative Services. I think, do we... No, this is information. So Vice President Gabel, you're going to present your report?
Yes, thank you. Myra's going to bring it up here. So going over, this is our third quarter budget performance report, so it reflects the current budget, well, the adopted budget. The current budget as of March 31st, 2017, the actual revenues received and expenditures incurred as of March 31st, 2017, and then we're doing a projection of what we think we're going to end the year with at June 30th of 2017. doing a projection of what we think we're going to end the year with at June 30 of 2017. And then you can see the variance columns between the current budget and the projected over and under. So here on the first page is our federal revenue and state apportionment revenue. I'll touch on the state principal apportionment revenue. As you can see there, we're projecting to receive $962,000, almost $963,000 less than what is in our budget, and that's due to a change in the deficit factor that the state applies. So we budgeted a half percent deficit factor. At the period one reporting that the state sent out in April, they applied a 1.3% deficit factor. So that is really the, the main cause of the decrease in revenue at that point in time. I will say that just last week, I attended a conference, and the chancellor's office is indicating that they think the deficit factor could be zero when we get to the end of the year. So we will be building that into our tentative budget, so you will see a change at that point in time. Moving on to, so there at the bottom with the other state revenue and the local revenue, not a lot of changes on this page. So kind of here on the third page, our total revenue and other financing sources, you can see that we're projecting $881,000 decrease in revenues, what's in our current budget. And as I mentioned, that's primarily related to the change in the deficit factor for the apportionment. There at the bottom of page three is where we start looking at our expenditures. So here, this is our academic salaries, and at this point in time, we're projecting that we will spend about $188,000 less than what's at our current budget, and that's primarily just due to vacancies that have occurred throughout the year in both faculty, where we had some mid-year retirements or resignations, as well as some unpaid leaves, and then vacancies within our academic administrator salaries on there. For our classified salaries, you can see the total classified salaries, we're projecting a savings of about $1.2 million from what's in the budget. And this is, again, due to vacancies that have occurred throughout the year. You know, we have over 500, both classified and classified managers, and so throughout the year, we have numerous vacancies that occur. And in order to fill those positions, it's a minimum of three months, sometimes it's six months or eight months before we can get them filled. So even though we budget for the positions to be filled for the entire 12 months, it doesn't always occur, and therefore we have a one-time savings is what you're seeing here on this projection. The benefits is the next major section. You can see there that we're projecting about a $631,000 savings. Again, benefits are a function of salaries, so when we're projecting a decrease in salaries, we have a decrease in the benefits. Supplies and materials, not a large change there. We're still projecting to spend about what we had planned. Right now, we have about a $21,000 savings that we're looking at. Moving on to page five, this is where you see the contract services and operating expenses. Here we are projecting a $4.3 million savings from what was in the budget. That is primarily related to the business process review allocations that we've made and some of the one-time mandated cost money that has been made that have not been spent yet. So we will be carrying those funds over into the next fiscal year, 1718, and you'll see that at the next board meeting in the tentative budget as well. The next section on page six, the capital outlay section, again, here's a large savings of about $523,000 for capital outlay, and that is one-time mandated cost money that was allocated for equipment that will not get received by June 30. So those funds will be carrying over into the next fiscal year. There are plans to spend it, there's a lot of purchase orders that are out there, but unfortunately, some of the lead time on that equipment is not going to allow us to receive it by June 30, so we'll have to roll that into the next fiscal year. So overall, looking down towards the bottom of the page, at this point in time, our operating deficit that we're projecting for June 30 is $4,454,000. That is a decrease from what our budget was, so about a $6 million decrease, which would bring our ending fund balance down to 23.8 million, and that represents just under, or sorry, just over an 18% ending fund balance. So that concludes my report on this. I'll open up to any questions if anybody has any.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do.
Trustee Otto.
So I'll start off with page seven, where we look at assigned reserves, and we have the reserve for business process reviews. We didn't budget for it, but we've had actual expenditures of 3.8 million?
No, so we did budget for it. If you recall, going back up to both the contract services, that professional services line on page five, there's a 3.6 million savings. There's also money that was budgeted in the other services and expenses, the, the third to the last line on page five, the $368,000 savings. Those two combined were part of the BPRs that were budgeted, but not spent. And so I, I think it's just a formatting of how we're showing it, because this is reserve, all of the reserves haven't been spent, but we're showing that we are reserving them as of March 31, and projecting to reserve that as of June 30. So these assigned reserves for the business process reviews, as well as for the one-time mandated cost carryover, and then the full-time faculty, will all be budgeted in the tentative budget when you see that next month.
And how are we doing with our business process reviews? Which ones have we started and finished, and what remains to be done?
So we have made progress. I would say the, we have completed the academic services business process review, and within that, Greg is, I'll let him add on to something, because I think he may be trying to say something that I'm not saying, but the academic services BPR was accomplished. You know, the, the big highlight of that was we got rid of the paper forms to repeat a course. So we just had a discussion about repeatability. Before, you had to fill out a form in order to be able to repeat it. Now it is done within PeopleSoft, and they don't have to fill out a form. So that has saved a significant amount of paper and time for the enrollment services staff, as well as for the students not having to stand in line. We have also finished and completed the financial aid business process reviews, where there were a lot of processes that were updated and changed, and moving forward on that one. We did some work within the purchasing area. Some of that is still ongoing and will be moving forward. We are planning on starting the human resource and payroll business process review next fall. The benefits piece will probably start in January on that, and then we are going to be looking at the admissions and records side of enrollment services to try to do something in the next fiscal year as well.
And I know this isn't the time really to, we can, we can ask for a report on business service review and all of it, but do we think that the money that's now allocated, or that we expect to be allocated in the, in the budget, will pay for all those things that you've talked about?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And is there anything that we anticipated when we started awarding these contracts that we think we're not going to be able to do, either because it's too costly, or because it wasn't necessary? And I'll make this a two-part question. And if we successfully implement all the things that we said we were going to do when we let these contracts, what's the savings?
So to answer the, the first part of the, the question first, you know, I think that we will be able to complete the areas that we had intended to complete when we first started. We have been issuing the contracts as we go, so we haven't yet issued the contracts for the ones that are going to be coming up in 1718. But we do still anticipate that the funding that we provided will be sufficient to cover those. The savings, I would say, would be difficult to calculate, because really, the savings is in staff time, in processing time, and student time, and so it's making our systems more efficient, it's making our systems more student-friendly, and so you, you can't really calculate a dollar amount of the savings related to that.
Okay. Okay. So then I want to turn to this other issue about the bog fee waivers. And so we learned as trustees, I believe, that earlier this month, we had a problem with a change in regulations in the bog fee waivers, and that what had hap, what happened was that there were changes in regulations which, in essence, said, instead of just you got one if you were at a certain income level, that you now had to complete, was it 50% of your coursework with a C or better average, and if you didn't, you didn't get the bog fee waiver, meaning that you had to pay for it, pay, pay the tuition, and that we were expected to implement regulations that would do that. And my understanding is that we did not do that. Is that a fair summary?
Correct.
And as a result of that, what's, what, what cost was it to the college?
So the cost to the college is, you see here on page two, towards the bottom, we have a line item loss on bog waivers. At this point in time, we're estimating that it's $206,793. I know enrollment services staff have been reaching out and calling students and sending additional emails to see if there are further financial aid waivers that can be requested to try to reduce that amount. They are supposed to be done by the end of this month, so I guess that would be tomorrow.
We gave a, we gave a, a tentative deadline of May 26. We communicated, not only did we send a hard letter, we called, we put a phone bank together, we called all the students, we sent a email message and text, so really tried to capture the various forms. As of today, we are processing them all. We have over 250 appeals that came in, which benefits, not only benefits the, reducing the cost to the district, but also benefits those students because they would be impacted for the summer term.
So the, how many students were involved in not getting this information, and therefore were theoretically impacted if they would have had the money taken away? What's that number?
So we're looking at, we had approximately over 1,000 students, 1,036 students that would have been impacted in fall, winter, and spring.
Mm-hmm.
Of that, we were able to go back through and look at progress. So the regulation allows that if a student makes progress, even though they're below the, the standard, that they can still be eligible. So when we went through that, we got, we reduced the number down to 462.
So, but, but we still stand by the $206,000 figure is what it is that we believe we may. We don't, I know that, this is an issue all over the state, I understand, that, that it hasn't been worked out, and I've known, because at Consultation Council in Sacramento, that student groups and, and other groups have said that the implementation of this has been difficult, but we're, we're still working through this to come up with a solution.
So we have, working with IITS, we've created coding that will change the process, or automate the process in PeopleSoft. This last week, we tested it in admissions and records. So everything is, is online to have it implemented for summer, so that we'll have this in place. And the next round that we'll have to implement it will be at the end of the semester within 30 days.
Gotcha, okay.
So at this point, the 207,000 is the maximum that we think we will lose in funding, and we're hoping to bring that down. I will also be working with the chancellor's office to see if there's an appeal on that loss in funding, or, or what we can do. Since this is a new regulation, you know, we don't know how they're going to address it. Depends upon which division you ask. The finance division says absolutely you will be charged that. I think the student services division says, oh, it's the first year, other folks are having problems, it'll be okay. But ultimately, it's going to be the finance division that will make the decision.
But we're supporting the student services division.
And can we humanize this cost? I mean, it's a cost to us, but what does it do, what did the fact that we didn't implement this do to, do to our students? You know, we're all about student success, and, and there are obviously consequences.
So, so the fact that we didn't implement the regulations as we should have, saved those over 400 students from having to pay the enrollment fees. In essence, they should have paid the enrollment fees. We didn't inform them or charge them for the enrollment fees, and so rather than us trying to go back to those students and say, we messed up, you're really not eligible, we are going to be paying for it ourselves, and kind of giving those students a pass on our mistake.
So, and, go ahead. Trustee Otto, what we're hoping to see that we can bring back to the board is, we are running progress. So we'll see the number of students who, because they were able to take courses in these semesters, who were able to demonstrate progress, so they'll actually be able to continue to be eligible. So that's a benefit, silver lining that we'll be able to demonstrate, that we can bring back.
Okay, so, so here's my personal $64,000 question. And that is, so how did this happen? Doesn't this indicate that we are not in control of our processes? Putting my own green eye shade on, I wonder whether what's going on is that we don't have the commitment to this business process review stuff so that we get it done, and if we don't, and we're not committed to it, are we not doing it, and are we wasting a lot of money? Because it seems almost unforgivable that, that it happened, and I'm worried about it, about, okay, we fix, maybe we're fixing it now, but what I'm worried about as a trustee whose job is not to wear a green eye shade, but to do policy, is to say to everybody, but especially the president, are we in control of our processes? Do we know what's happening? Do we have the managers in the right place to make sure that these things get done? Because as I understand, what happened, it was a failure to do what was clearly expected of us, and make me feel comfortable.
So, so first and foremost, we take full accountability for this issue. Within context, as you talk about business process review, so the work of business process review ultimately streamlines and dramatically improves the systems for students. The workload in implementing that is very intensive upfront. So unfortunately, we entered into this work of redesigning our, all of our large business processes and financial aid at the same time this new regulation was being implemented. So timing-wise exacerbated the situation, as there were all of these moving pieces and all of these, these processes and components we were looking at, which, which made it more difficult. What's, what's good about the system that we're putting in place for our business processes is that it's bringing us up to the current standard, the best practice of the state, and so it puts us in a position to be better able to really track and ensure that we're meeting all of those requirements moving forward.
But do you feel that you have a explanation for what happened, in a sense that says, you know, this won't happen again? I mean, I worry that what we're really doing here with this whole business process review thing is, did we just lose a quorum?
It's okay, there's no, no action on this item.
Okay. Did we, because, because what we're really doing is changing PeopleSoft. I mean, we're not implementing new, whole new brand systems, we're just, that's the long and short of it. And I'm not saying that's an easy thing to do, in fact, I think it's not an easy thing to do, but we're stuck with PeopleSoft, and I mean, I shouldn't say we're stuck with it, but we've made a commitment to, to PeopleSoft, and yet, I think, my, my own assessment of it, for what it, for what it's worth, is that there's, there's a failure of, of processes, of having things in place to prevent these things, that, to prevent this from happening, which, happening, which was pretty doable, and having not done it, I want to make sure that nothing like this ever happens again. We were lucky that the way that this one went was that it didn't hurt our students. In fact, it hurt us, although if you take $200,000 out of our budget, that hurts our students. So I just wonder whether there's a commitment to business process review, and to what it takes to get business profit review done. I, I worry that we lack the, the managers, or the, or the, the people that, that are committed to this, to get it done, and if we're, and if we don't have it in place and we don't acknowledge that, this not only could happen again, but I think, I think our job as trustees is to raise those questions, and say, this is not a, right now, we're going to solve all this, but, but do a kind of shot across the bow of, how did this happen? How do we prevent this from happening again? Are we in control of what we're doing? And so that's why I raise this.
Trustee Otto?
Questions on item, other questions on item 9.1? Chair recognizes Trustee Zia.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kellogg. I, one is just, I think it's very valid points that Trustee Otto has raised. While I agree with Trustee Otto, perhaps, you know, this is a line item in the budget, perhaps we can have a agenda item, I don't know if it's closed session eligible, that we can get further details on the specifics of what happened, if that's the desire of the board, just so we can prevent future occurrences. Because I am concerned about some of the controls and also mechanisms that, that Trustee Otto alluded to, that I, I'm not, I'm not as confident as I should be on whether it's that robust, but I don't know, I have to see all the facts, and perhaps we can, if that's something that you like, Trustee Otto, perhaps we can explore having an exclusive agenda item to look into the details of what happened and how to prevent any future circumstances like this.
We, we, we got an initial memo which was artfully drafted. We got an initial memo, which was artfully drafted, appropriately drafted, to not reveal a lot of confidential information, or things that might cause us additional issues. I feel better than I did after the initial memo, that, as to what the explanations are, as to what happened. So, I'd really, I guess I'd like to see another, as an agenda item, just a further report on where we stand as this thing washes itself out.
Thank you, trustee Zia. President Romali?
Yes, we can absolutely do that. Trustee Otto, your comments are very well said, and very well heard. I share your concern as well, as does the management team. I have in my notes for this Tuesday's executive team meeting to review the processes, lessons learned. How did we, how did we get there? What can we make sure that it doesn't end up a bigger problem in the future? And we will be happy to, once we've brainstormed, how does this not happen again, to bring this back to you, and give you those reassurances that we are prepared for the future on these types of matters. Okay.
Trustee Malauulu?
Having said what has already been said, I would just like to take a moment to acknowledge the fact that, when we received the memo with the information, I did shoot out a few questions. Vice President Gabel, and also our new Superintendent President, as well as Vice President Peterson, they replied right away, they responded right away. The information that I got, while it didn't make things better, the fact that we got the information, they were timely, they were on top of it, you know, they knew that it was an error that needed to be addressed. So, I do appreciate that. So, moving forward, I actually think, trustee Zia, that that is a good idea. I do think that perhaps we should all meet as a closed session item to get more information, because I do believe it involves some personnel. So, I don't think we could discuss that publicly. But I think that would be a great idea. And I also think that, in that discussion, we could also master plan a way to troubleshoot, and hopefully know where the gap is that we can certainly plug. Thank you.
Then I would just make this additional point, and that is, it's like the cat's out of the bag. I'm not sure we need to, I think in the interest of transparency, we ought to do it in open session. I don't think we want to talk about any individuals that might have been disciplined, or something like that. I don't think that that is necessarily appropriate, although, I don't know what the facts are. So, maybe that will be appropriate. But what I'm suggesting is, I think there's been some discussion about whether this needed to be in close, or could be in closed session, and great minds may differ. So, let's see as the facts develop, and then see what happens from our administration, and to make a recommendation, and based on what we get, we can make that decision.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Vice President Gabel, now, would you give your, oh, that's right, we have to do a motion. 9.2.
No.
No? Oh.
9.1 was the.
Information item. No, I understand that. I guess I thought we were moving on. Is that okay if we move on? Trustee Zia? Okay. Okay, 9.2, 2016-17CCFS 311Q, Third Quarter Financial Status Report, and this is an action item.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved by trustee Kellogg, seconded by trustee Zia. Vice President Gabel.
Well, you know, do we, I'm sorry, if we want to report, but isn't, can correct me, Vice President Gabel, but this is just part of the report that goes to the Chancellor's Office, all the items that you talked about. Is there additional items that would need to be brought forward?
Correct. No, so, this report is summarizing the information report that I just went over in greater detail. I would say, the only thing to bring to the Board's attention, which I'm sure you guys saw, is on the last page of this report, page three, or three, three of three, where it's asking if we think we have significant fiscal problems that must be addressed either this year or next year. For next year, we did say yes, and that's because of the structural deficit that we have facing us. But you guys will hear more about that on the next board meeting, when we present the agenda budget.
Okay.
For the vote.
So, should we call for the vote?
Can I just ask one more question? And it really doesn't pertain to the report, but statewide, we've been very worried about community colleges getting their fair share of Prop 98 monies. There was a long article in the LA Times this morning about how the governor has now decided, despite the fact that he did not mention it in the May revises, that he intends to have a two-year deferral on Prop 98 money for K through 12. It's a lot of money. And I'm just, I just want the public to know whether his acts of deferral, or his recommendation or his intent to defer things affects us at all. And I will just say, I remember when I first got on this board, a long time ago, I worried like crazy about the first budget I looked at, and then President Janet Kehoe put her arm around me and say, "Oh, we don't get a third of that till next year anyway, so don't worry about it." And I thought, oh, this is more complicated than I thought. So, what's your feeling?
So, one of, one of the proposals is what they're calling a prospective deferral for K-12. There is a piece related to community colleges, well, the piece that's related to community colleges is the Instructional Equipment and Deferred Maintenance Block Grant. So, since that is a special grant, we are not going to be budgeting anything. It's not like the cash deferrals that we were under during the recession, so it's completely different. You know, so for right now, either we're going to get scheduled maintenance and instructional equipment money in May of 19, or we won't. It won't impact our 17, 18 budget, because since it's a prospective allocation, we're not going to budget it.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Call the rule.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, 9.3, Resolution Assignment of Delinquent Tax Receivables, that the Board of Trustees Adopt Resolution 053017B, Approving the Assignment of Delinquent Tax Receivables to the California Statewide Delinquent Tax Finance Authority for the fiscal years ending June 30, 2017 through June 30, 2019, and Authorizing Execution and Delivery of Related Documents and Actions.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Kellogg, seconded by trustee Zia. Vice President Gabel, do you wish to speak to this?
Only if there's questions.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I was going to ask some questions. Is there anything in the resolution I need to be aware of? It's pretty straightforward.
No, this is something that we've been doing since 2002, and every year, we work with the county to actually do the agreements to try to get property taxes that are delinquent. So, it benefits the district to do this.
Okay. Then, call the role please.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
9.4, Resolution Disposal of District Property with a Collective Value of Under $5,000, that the Board of Trustees Adopt Resolution 053017C, to authorize a director of business support services or designate to dispose of district property as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee, moved by trustee Zia, seconded by trustee Otto. Are there any questions?
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
9.5, Resolution Change Order Authorization Under $100,000, that the Board of Trustees Adopt Resolution Number 0530117D, to authorize a Vice President Administrative Services or designate to execute change orders under $100,000 as submitted.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Kellogg.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Zia.
I have a question.
Yes.
What's the authorization right now?
$100,000. It's the same.
Same, yeah.
This resolution is valid through June 30, 2022. Any other questions?
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
9.6, Institutional Memberships for 2017-18, that the Board of Trustees Authorize Approval of District Institution Memberships for 2017 through 18 as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved by trustee Kellogg, seconded by trustee Zia. Any questions? Okay, call for the question.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
9.7, Revised Board Policy 6002 in Service, that the Board of Trustees Approve and Adopt Board Policy 6002 for in-service as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Kellogg, seconded by trustee Zia. Are there any questions?
And just four. This has been discussed and approved by the President's Leadership Council prior to it being sent to us, so it's gone through its process.
Correct.
Call for the question.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
9.8, Revised Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 6009, Bids and Contracts, that the Board of Trustees Approve and Adopt Policy 6009 for bids and contracts as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Zia, seconded by trustee Kellogg. Any questions?
Just so it's clear, it is in the language, the extended language of the agenda item, but we approve board policies, we don't approve administrative regulations. And it says that, but the public doesn't get that unless they really drill down. So, we're only approving the revised board policy.
Excellent. Thank you. Call for the question.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
9.9, New Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 6017, Public Records, that the Board of Trustees Approve and Adopt Board Policy 6017 for Public Records as submitted. And thank you, trustee Otto, for bringing out that we're only approving the policy.
So moved.
Okay. Moved by trustee Zia.
I think it was seconded by trustee Kellogg.
Seconded by trustee Kellogg. Any questions?
This is actually a new policy, but, and it's fine, it's standard with others, but it's, it's a new one.
Okay.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
9.10, New Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 6016, Debt Issuance.
So moved.
That the, oh, this is first reading, so it does not need a motion. And the new policy is that, in accordance with established practices, the new board policy and administrative regulation has been distributed, discussed, and approved by the President's Leadership Council. The new board policy is being presented for the first reading and discussion. The new board policy complies with SB 1029, which amends California Government Code, Section 8855, regarding the issuance of bond debt, effective January 1, 2017. An issuer must certify in the report of proposed debt issuance that it has adopted local debt policy, and required to be filed no later than 30 days prior to the sale of any debt issued. So, this is also a first reading, and does not need, but, yeah, it does not need to be approved.
Yeah. Do we, just a quick question, do we have local debt policies at this time, or are we now creating new ones?
No, this is a brand new one that we're creating in response to SB 1029. And, you know, we included in the first reading, a lot of information that is backup to the administrative regs, just so that the Board could fully understand the magnitude of this policy.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I understand the magnitude of it, I just don't understand it, but that's for off-site. There is a lot of information on this one, but.
Okay. 9.11, Revised Administration Regulation 3018, Mileage Reimbursement. This is an information item, is submitted for informational purposes, and does not require board action. In accordance with established practices, the revised administration regulation has been distributed, discussed, and approved by the President's Leadership Council. The revised administrative regulation is being presented for information only, and does not need board action. Okay. Number 10.1, Revised Board Policy 5001, Dual Enrollment.
So moved.
Okay. Moved by trustee Zia, seconded by trustee Kellogg. That the Board of Trustees Approve and Adopt Board Policy 5001, Dual Enrollment as Submitted. Revised Administration Regulation, Admission and Registration of Dual Enrollment Students Submitted for Informational Purpose Only. Why does it say it needs board action, then?
I have a question, Madam trustee.
Yes.
I mean, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Is that dual enrollment exclusive to Long Beach Unified School District students, or is it anybody that's in high school?
It's anyone that's in high school.
Thank you.
President Baxter.
Yes.
I think the reason why it says, doesn't require board actions, because it's in the, it applies to the administrative regulation component of the.
Oh, okay. So, we're approving the policy regarding admission and registration of dual enrollment students.
Call for the vote.
Okay.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Excellent. 10.2, Revised Board Policy 5015, Tuition and Fees, that the Board of Trustees Approve and Adopt Policy 5015, trustees, tuition and fees as submitted. I need a motion.
So moved.
Okay. Moved by trustee Zia, seconded by trustee Otto. Is there any questions about this policy? Call for the question.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Academic Senate, President.
Thank you, Board President Baxter. I'll keep it very brief. I would like to let the trustees know that at our last Senate meeting of the academic year, we held elections for our new Senate Executive Committee. The following will begin a two-year term on July 1. Our new president is Jorge Ochoa, Assistant President John Downey, Secretary Treasurer Shawna Hagaman, Legislative Liaison Kenny Hillman, PCC Representative Christina Morehead, and our LAC representative will be Colin Williams. That concludes my report.
Excellent. I'm just writing this down. I got PCC Christine Morehead, Christine Morehead. Who is LAC?
Colin Williams.
Oh, Colin Williams. Okay. Thank you.
And their term begins when?
July 1. July 1.
You have one more meeting.
You have one more meeting.
One more meeting.
Very good. Excellent.
Don't say it that way.
I'll quit smiling.
But, we'll talk about you next month, but you've done a super job, you know that. Okay. 11.2, Superintendent President.
Thank you, President Baxter. I want to begin with a giant thank you to the campus community for welcoming me. It's been a wonderful experience. I want to thank the trustees, the community, the managers, faculty, staff, and students for the very, very warm welcome. It's truly wonderful to be here. I want to give a special thank you to Anne Marie Gabel, who's been just an absolute delight, and such a help in the transition. A great big thank you to you. During my first two weeks, I was truly able to see what makes Long Beach City College a community. And I've been over to PCC four times in the last couple of weeks, so I'm very, very excited. We are one college, and so it's so exciting to see the great work that's going over there, and I want to especially commend the PCC folks for their hard work. I want to say a big thank you to the outstanding Colleague Awards winners. Congratulations again go out to Jean Carbonaro, Computer and Office Studies, CC Fan, Counseling and Student Support Service, Anne Marie Gabel, Administrative Services, Carlos Ramos, Social Science and Sociology, Kimberly Queiroz, in the Assessment Center. They definitely deserve huge congratulations. I also participated in the Jacaranda Essay Contest, and began to soak in the academic rigor and the academic excellence that exists here. And I want to congratulate the students in our honors program, and thank them, and Professor Wheeler. And I want to congratulate the students in our honors program and thank them and Professor Wheeler for welcoming me at your annual banquet. It was such a testament to the students' academic achievement and so inspiring to see them. I want to also thank the constituent groups that I've been able to meet with just in two weeks. They are so engaged with running this college in a shared governance fashion, and they have contributed in such the spirit of passion and collaborative governance system. I want to recognize Thomas Hamilton, AFT, Jim, my friend, Janay Hunbear from LBCCFA, and Karen Roberts from CHI, who have given invaluable advice and wisdom on the campus. I want to give a big shout out to the classified staff and highlight their recognition luncheon that we attended last week that was just lovely. I also want to give a special shout out to Karen Kane and the Academic Senate, who are just full of wonderful shared governance ideas. I could not be more grateful. The ASB and the student clubs have also given their input, and I want to highlight the oh-so-interesting pie in the Pie the President Phi Theta Kappa event that I'm sure that you will bribe me with pictures later on. But congratulations to PTK because they were able to use that fundraiser as their best fundraiser ever. So if we have to get a little pie in the face to raise money, we will do so. I want to say a special thank you. James, I don't see him here, but he gave a fabulous presentation. The Veterans Club Event was absolutely lovely, and it really was very sobering to see the faces of the fallen. And they are working so hard to bring services to our veterans. And I'm excited to steal our neighbors' students once we're able to provide even more wonderful resources for them. I also attended the soft launch of the portal, which is going to support student entrepreneurship, and it recognizes the strength of our economic and workforce development program. Also want to shout out those of you who know Miles Nevin. He is now Doctor Miles Nevin, having earned his doctorate degree. We congratulate you.
Let the hazing begin.
Yes, we will absolutely haze him.
Get a siphon?
You get a siphon, Miles.
Yes.
You can have mine.
Yes, he may not answer, but yes, he does.
We've also spent a tremendous amount of time reflecting on the strategic plan in the last two weeks. And I want the board and the campus community to know that we are 100% invested in this plan. We have already begun many, many discussions with the campus community in how to operationalize the plan, how to bring all the wonderful things that the campus is doing together into an executable plan. How do we then execute on it? How do we measure our success against the plan? What do we do when there are holes in information or things that we might be doing? And I want to congratulate everyone on their good work with that, and especially Dr. Bag, so many, and Karen Kane. So many of these fabulous ideas you're going to see continue to come to fruition, and that's very, very exciting for you. This is a very exciting time. On the college campus, students are preparing for their finals and nervous and going through all that. And most importantly, we're preparing for commencement. The exciting news, in addition to all our graduates, is we're going to be welcoming back our own Viking alumni, Ahmad Lewis, who was the valedictorian in 2007. I can't wait to hear his speech. He went on to graduate from Stanford and USC, and he does social work while managing his musical career on the side. Now, also some fabulous news. We have over 2,000 graduates this year.
Wow, that's great.
Compared to 1721 last year. That's 20,042 this year compared to 1721 this year. So everyone at the entire campus can be proud that they helped those students get across the finish line. As a reminder, the ceremony runs from 4:00 to 8:00, and trustees are asked to arrive at 3:00 PM for the platform party reception. And we're going to get some more details that are forthcoming from my office this week. I want to give two special notes of congratulations before I sign off. This past year, our very own trustee Doug Otto served as the President of the Statewide Association of Community College Trustees. And last month, he completed his term. And Doug, we're so proud of you, and I want to thank you so much for serving in this role. And I said to someone recently, if it can be done, trustee Otto will get it done, and if he can't get it done, it can't be done. So he's absolutely fabulous. We have so much regard for you. It's also with bittersweetness that we congratulate our Dean of Institutional Effectiveness, Dr. Eva Bag, who has been appointed Barstow College President. I've only been here two weeks, but I am absolutely devastated at your loss, so I can't imagine how devastating it is for the college who has known you for 10 years. I want to thank you so much for your service here. We will miss you. And just know that we are carrying out your good work and making it all come to fruition, and we hope that you come back and see us someday and see all of your dreams come true. So we're going to make you proud. So thank you so much, President Baxter.
Thank you. Student trustee Alejandro Romelli.
Awesome, thank you. So I'll kind of keep this brief. I don't really, at this point, we have a lot. I don't know if there's much to add of all the positive things I've said on, you know, both parts, but it's obvious to know that it's my last board meeting, so it's bittersweet. But again, I'm happy that we're still able to get out of this room by midnight, so I'm looking forward into that. Yeah, I have a quiz due at midnight, so I'm kind of going to run out at any point. So I wrote some stuff. So I have no doubt that the students here will accomplish everything that they will. And when I first came here, I didn't really know, again, what to expect. I got involved in student life literally within the first week of my attending here at the college. Someone pulled me to the side and said, hey, you should vote for this. And this was back in the day when we didn't have online elections for ASB, so we had to write down on ballots. And that really, you know, changed my perspective because at first I wanted to be-- I was involved in high school, but I wanted to just kind of get my, you know, college career going. Kind of, I didn't really think about getting involved at all with the community. I just wanted to go to class and go back home. But, I mean, look at me now, I guess. I don't even go home till like 8:00 or 9:00 PM some days.
Set that to music.
But yeah, my peers at the college really have inspired me from the very first day, and I know they'll continue to inspire me as I Facebook sock them for the rest of their lives. Not really, maybe, a little bit. But I hope to keep in contact with the family that I've really built here at the community college. So fun fact, I actually went to Downey High School, and their mascot was a Viking. So Dr. Houts, who was the principal at Downey High School, would always tell us when he'd come to speak to us was, you know, once a Viking, always a Viking. And then a few years later, I would never have thought that that could have been even more true than it is then. But I really do appreciate, you know, all the services that I was able to take advantage of, all the opportunities that I would not have been where I was at if I had not come to Long Beach City College and participated in the community here and met the people that I've met. They really connected me with individuals that, you know, will hopefully lead me down to a successful career path or be successful in any way that I can, and making sure that my friends are coming along with me and being successful as well. Eric, I know you're recording this. I can just send you the YouTube link if you want to later. You can watch all the meetings there.
So have you found a four-year college where the mascot is the Vikings?
Portland State, where I was considering transferring to.
With the Vikings?
Yeah.
Or maybe you should just move to Minnesota and--
Play for the Vikings.
I'm not a-- yeah, I'm a Ford Niners fan, and yeah. Ew, what do you mean? And the Minnesota Vikings are better?
Yes. Everybody's better than the Ford Niners.
All right, two bad seasons, and it's just the rest of our life downhill.
Colors are coming out.
Yeah. But you all kind of don't see it because I interact with you all very closely. But I really, at any opportunity that I get, whether it be here in the community or outside, visiting other colleges or in Sacramento, but I really do take advantage of every opportunity to plug in all the work that we're doing here at Long Beach City College. I've spoken to many people where sometimes they say, you're from Long Beach City College, you know this person, this person. I'm super excited. I'm like, yeah, yeah, I do. And then if I don't know them, I go back and try to introduce myself to that person eventually. But I've heard such great things, and I've seen firsthand the reputation that we speak about here at the board meetings. And I've seen the reputation that we've developed, and I want to see the reputation grow, being as the forefront of the community college system and making sure that we, you know, provide successful routes for individuals that have come through our community college, whether they be students, faculty, staff, administrators, moving on to bigger and better things. You know, testament to that, you know, that's amazing. And I hope to be that as well, and Eric, and Javier, and anyone else in the audience as well. But yeah, but thank you to the amazing students, leaders I've had a chance to meet and work with. Camille, you know, I've had a great opportunity to talk with you and speak to you both, you know, on a professional level, but also, you know, I think I consider us very close friends, and I'm really excited to see, you know, our relationship grow in any capacity that it will in the future. Eric, you know, you're doing great things and will continue to do great things, and you've really changed. I was a little scared when you got elected into it. I was like, this guy. But you've really brought a positive image to myself and student life and student engagement. And you're really, really, three years ago, dodgeball incident, man, just a lot of things have changed since then. And Javier, you have some large shoes to fill, size 11 to be exact, so. See, oh, okay. No, then we're good. No, don't even need to. But Javier, I've known you for like three years now, so you've been just a pleasure to work with, and I'm really excited to see where you take student government. And all the students here, you know, I can't name them because I've had the privilege of interacting with hundreds of thousands of students here, whether it be, you know, passing by in the hallway and saying hi, or, you know, asking them about a specific policy or, you know, regulation or any change like that, and discussing in a group setting or just discussing a one-on-one. I really have the privilege of, you know, serving them in any capacity that I can, so. Karen and I were talking about it earlier, but I think the whole vision of it, you know, is to leave it a little better than what it was when you came in, and I hope to have done that, and I will hope to see where that future holds. And then lastly, I do want to thank Miles because Miles does not get enough shout outs. So I told you I'd give you one, and your third time's a charm, man. Thank you.
Okay, oh, thank you. Okay. Trustee Zia.
Thank you, President Baxter. In the interest of time, since we have a second closed session, I'll be brief. I just want to congratulate President Romali for her first meeting. Hopefully, you enjoyed it as much as we do. We're a little bit peculiar that way, I guess. And then also, you know, I've heard others in the community, in our college community and family, express this, that perhaps we can make the meetings such that people who have children or families, working families, we can be more accommodating. So it's something for us to consider. I love that tonight we have that. We have the few kids in the audience. It's very joyful, and it softens the mood, so I like that. But, you know, perhaps we can consider accommodating for, you know, some of our faculties and staff and classified folks that want to be here but can't because of childcare. I can already see trustee Otto opposed to this, but perhaps, but I just want to bring that to the--
I'm not opposed to children.
I'm kidding, trustee Otto, because you were whispering something.
His grandchildren.
Perhaps we can bring trustee Otto's grandchildren and have a playdate with the rest of the family's children that we have here. Anyway, lastly, I just wanted to report that, you know, perhaps in the trustee committee, that we've looked at some of the options with our committee and the election committee, and we're still evaluating, and we'll bring it to the board as the assessment continues and completes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Kellogg.
The, I think all of us have agreed, where did the month of May go? Except that the month of June is also very busy in an enjoyable way, so we look forward to it. But May went through very quickly, it seems. But I did want to just bring a couple of items up because we don't do it. I think that we have to be responsible. One item is somewhat, this was a few weeks ago, but if we could adjourn the meeting just in honor of Ernie Kel. He's former mayor of City Long Beach. I served with him on the city council. He's been very active, believe it or not, with the--
Hall of Fame.
The Hall of Fame and the foundation. And so Ernie was a real-- I had the pleasure of serving under, with two mayors, Beverly Neal and Ernie Kel, and they're both very different in many ways, but both very passionate about how they felt towards the city. So if we could adjourn in memory of Ernie, I think that would be appropriate. I would just ask that to be considered. The item I just want to bring up is, really, we had this past month, the CCLC conference. A lot of times, you try to agendize it so you can talk about it, but I'm going to do that right now during the trustee. It was a very good conference, as was mentioned. Doug Otto, I see that, I'm so glad I took that picture, Doug. I didn't know I was part of your public relations team, but I ran up to the front of the meeting and took that one. It actually turned out very nicely, but congratulations on your year. The conference itself was very informative. Anne Marie gave an outstanding presentation regarding the budget that was very well received overwhelmingly, and talking about what challenges we have. A lot of information was at this one. Some of the things at the CCLC conference, for example, board members are, I don't want to say the word required, but it is encouraged, it may be required, but every two years for ethics training. So I went through and did mine, but it's one of the courses they offer there. Also, trustee Malauulu, you completed, and I don't know if it's arrived yet, but the Effective Trusteeship Program.
And I did two.
You did two?
Two months ago. I just didn't announce it.
Okay, well, the reason why, since, ladies and gentlemen, I was the first graduate of that, and I'm on the subcommittee that really is pushing for professional development, what, if that's the case--
We were in a contest, trustee Malauulu and I, and I just want to tell you, I won.
Can we make sure we get a photograph with a certificate and send it up to CCLC? Because it just is really something that we're all proud of, that you do it. It is to help, we've said repeatedly, this is not an infomercial, but educated board members make a board stronger, a strong board makes a college stronger, and of course, the results are the students' benefits. So congratulations, but that takes work. And so, and I did not even know that you, I knew you were getting close, but that was part of the curriculum as well, so congratulations on that. We also had there was, with the CCLC, was to address the issue of the clout of California on a national scene. The CCLC has done a remarkable job of, in the past, we were sort of like the game that couldn't shoot straight, the largest system in the United States, and we had limited representation on a national level, states, and congratulations to them. But there were small states that had much more representation on the national level, and so this organization, through a lot of these meetings, have really made that to where California is more represented on a national level with the National Association. All of these things are dealt with at these conferences, and so I just want to compliment everyone that was involved during presentations. I was involved in a presentation, again, one of which was the Effective Trusteeship Program. And as we mentioned, Doug completed it. So that was, that's a very quick surprise of the CCLC conference, which is beneficial to the trustees and everyone involved. So congratulations to everyone on that. And the final one, and this is just for consideration in the future, here we are 9:30 at night. And so just, I would hope all of you would start thinking about, and we'll talk with Superintendent President on this, about possible ways we can look at how we can do things with these meetings. I would just throw out that, not throw out, but just for consideration, about whether we're going to start putting time limitations on subject matters so we know there is an exact time limit. It sometimes expands, but that's one consideration. Another one to consider, because many of these items we dealt with tonight were the results of board members on Anne Marie Gable's first meeting of getting sort of a rush of, we want this, we want this, we want this. Well, tonight, we had a lot of informational items. We are not, right now, meeting once a month. We used to meet twice a month in many cases. I know that makes everyone excited, but if those become study sessions where you deal with informational items, maybe that will eliminate, because I'm sorry, but when you go past four hours in anything, it becomes challenging. And so I'm just thinking about some ways we can do things in the future to make our meetings more, more direct and concise. And so I'm just throwing that out for everyone else. Other suggestions, welcome, but I think at the end of the day, we're all trying to make four of the most effective meetings we possibly can have. So just start to put your thinking caps on, come up with some ideas as we move forward. Congratulations, everybody, that we've talked about. As we said, one of the great things in the next week is the commencement. And I'm sorry, the ceremony starts at what time? It starts at 4:00?
4:00 this time.
6:18.
Four.
6:18. I'm putting my time in right now on how long, but, oh, we have more people this year, so we always try to figure out how long it's going to take. Regardless of how long it takes, it's one of the real joys of going to, and it's why we are here. So look forward to the month of June. If it's anything as busy as May, we're all in for a lot of activity. So congratulations to everyone, everyone's hard work. Thank you.
Hey, trustee Otto.
No report.
Trustee Malauulu.
I'm going to take trustee Otto's time. I have a lot to go over. Very quickly, I'm just going to run down, the month of May was very busy. Some of the things that I was involved in since our last board meeting. The April 27th Foundation Board of Governors Breakfast was awesome. We were able to recognize our donors, which is a really big deal. We're very great-- We're very grateful. I'm going to skip the first week of May, I'll come back to that. But then going into, further into May, I was able to attend the Port of Long Beach Welcome for the new executive director, Mario Cordero, who is a former faculty member here. He and his wife Gloria also both taught here. So we're very excited, and I know that our vice president, Luanne Bynum, is a harbor commissioner. So it was really nice to be able to be there to congratulate him. On the 18th, I attended the Colleague Awards, such an amazing reception that our own faculty nominates and chooses these colleagues, which is awesome. And then later that evening, several of us were at the CCEJ Dinner, another wonderful Long Beach community event. The 19th was a record-breaking day. I think I was on campus six hours that day, and my husband was with me. He was here earlier, but he stepped out. I just wanted to publicly thank him. We were on campus for the Pacific Pride Event, which was the first-of-its-kind conference hosted by the Pacific Islander students. Really well done. I would like to congratulate them on executing a very organized program with speakers and workshops, a great ethnic lunch and dancing entertainment by Pacific Islander students where they were wearing their full costume. It was like a luau right here on campus. And from there, I was at the Classified Luncheon hosted by the Personnel Commission, which was, the theme was great. It was like a worldly tour of the world, different food stations and different decorations, which was awesome. Last year, it was a cowboy western theme, and I don't, I didn't think they were going to be able to top that one last year, but then this year was, you know, they did such a great job. And then we walked over to the Black Student Summit, and I was completely floored, because, you know, I didn't know what to expect. They had 300 middle school and high school students wearing ties. And when I walked into the room, the first impression that I got was like, "Who are these kids and where'd they come from?" And they're from our neighborhood, and they were there, and they had, our students, our Viking students, were speakers, performers, entertainers. They sat at tables, they coordinated groups. And I just really want to commend both the Pacific Islander staff who helped put on that event, and also the African-American club who helped sponsor the Black Student Summit. You guys did an amazing job. What a busy day on campus that day was. Into the following week, on the 23rd, I was also a participant in the PTK Pie-in-the-Face. We're just going to leave it at that. It was fun. I always carry a change of two or three outfits in my car. That's just how I roll, because I work and I have multiple events. So I had an extra outfit that I planned on changing into, but I didn't think I would need a shower. So I ended up having to cut out a little early because I had to carve a shower into my schedule to be able to make it through the rest of the day. It was just awful. Whip cream and shaving cream just don't work. So I'm glad that we were able to contribute, but I can think of other ways that we can make money. We'll just leave it at that. The next day, I was invited to participate in the radio-TV program Broadcast News class, which, that was my major in college, so I felt right at home. And I got to interact with some of our Broadcast News students, and it was just, I think it was way more fun for me than it was for them, for me to be in that environment. It brought back a lot of great memories. The equipment that they use is very modern. The equipment that I was using 25 years ago was like Betacam, big, super-thick videos, and they have all this high-tech stuff, so I wouldn't know what to do. But I look forward to seeing the episode. It'll, I believe they said it will broadcast in the fall, so I'm excited. They're going to edit it all summer. And believe me, it does take that long. For a three-minute segment, you could spend 20-something hours on it. And then I was at the honors banquet last week, and I was just kind of eyeballing the program, and I knew that there were more students this year than last year. And when I talked to Jeff Wheeler about it, he said that there were 20, 20 more honor students this year, and it seemed that way. So I'm very impressed by the work that they're doing. On Friday, superintendent president Romali and board president Baxter and I attended a John Filpa Leadership Workshop with some of the students in the program. And, you know, I just want to say that I've heard Dr. Baxter's story a few times, not in its entirety, but I'd never heard Dr. Romali's story. And it was just really neat to be able to witness the interaction that our new superintendent president has with our student body, to be able to personal, personify herself, personalize her story to these students. So I was, I was very proud to be a part of that. Today, we were at the Student Life Awards at the PCC campus, and I love students on both campuses, obviously, but I just think that the PCC students have so much heart, because the campus is so small and the campus community is very different than the LAC campus. It's noticeable. So for the work that they do and the events that they're able to pull off, it's really endearing to me. I would like to comment on their theme. It was so drastic compared to the fall semester theme, which was steampunk. Do you guys remember the steampunk theme? I left the Student Life Awards Luncheon last year ready to beat something up, or, you know, demo something with that steampunk. And today, it was the soothing spa, you know, seashell thing, and I was just like, ready to cancel the board meeting, like, "Hey, you know, look at this. They got a spa laid out for us." So congratulations, PCC students, on your creativity. Now I'm going to go back to the first week of May. I did attend my last and final conference of the year, and it was in Lake Tahoe, and several of us were there. It was sponsored by CCLC. And I would like to thank trustee Kellogg for mentioning the fact that I graduated from the Excellence in Trusteeship Program. It's probably not a big deal to anybody but me or those who have gone through the program, but it is a rigorous 27-unit program. They give you two years to complete it. I, as soon as I heard about it, I signed up for it at my first conference in November in Riverside, and I got really busy taking the classes, attending the workshops, the webinars. There are little assignments that go with it, and I'm very excited. And it's just reaffirming my commitment to having been elected to this board and how serious I take this job. I didn't know anything about being a trustee when I got elected, honest, I didn't. And I can honestly say that in the past year, I've learned so much, and this program has a lot to do with my evolution as a trustee. Now, toward the end, again, I want to congratulate Dr. Romali on her first meeting. Once again, thank vice president Gable for the great service that she did. I miss having her sit next to me, because we were always going back and forth. I had so many questions. I would like to congratulate Eva and Mona Lisa and Miles on their achievements. Just really proud of you guys. Go forth and make us proud. And also Alejandro, thank you once again. I would like to congratulate the new ASB team, our new president, who was just about to sneak out, and then I called him out, and to let you guys know that we look forward to your work. I have three projects pending, you know, I'm, I'm not going to give up on that Viking float. I'm not giving up on that. I just don't want to be rolling through the city in these, you know, work truck during the parades, I know. So we're going to, we're going to have a float that'll make you guys all proud, especially because of our 90th anniversary. Also, looking forward to the changes being made to our communications program. I know John Pope and I have worked on that. We're really trying to integrate more notification to our students so that more people can attend our events. And then there's a couple of other projects that we have going, so we're going to make it happen. I would like to say thank you to the staff for indulging me in the veterans and the students' shared governance presentations. I appreciate that. I know it took some time, but it means a lot to me, and I think the community really wanted to hear it, and what a great, what great presentations they were. I would also like to thank Camille, once again, I know I already mentioned you, for your service to our ASB, and Michelle Reese, who is filling in for Jackie. Just thank you for doing a great job with our meeting today. You were fine. We went easy on you, I just want you to know. I'd like to wish everybody good luck on finals. Study hard, cram night tonight. I'd like to encourage everyone on campus, students, faculty, and staff, to finish strong. I know it gets really tiring. We've got so many events in the next couple of weeks. And congratulations to our Class of 2017 Vikings. Go forth, make us proud, come back as alumni. Thank you. That's it.
Is that all?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm, I'm actually not going to speak too long, but I do want to comment about the trustee, Excellence in Trusteeship. Trustee Malauulu and I got into a little contest, and I have to tell you that that really helped me, because I was going to beat her at getting that certificate. And so, I worked very, very hard. And you do not have to send that up there. They sent that to us. So you don't have to send, the CCLC knows we got it, but so, and you got a PIN, too. You got a PIN.
Okay.
So you can wear that at meetings, yes. So that, that's one thing. Almost everything that she did, I was there.
[laughing]
So I'm not going to repeat that. But I, but I did want to bring up about the float. And I wanted to praise Derek O'Ree and his students who decorated the float for the Pride Parade, and they did a beautiful job, and it was very, very nice. And so, there, and the reason, one of the things, I know you want that float, but what he did is, we had to get down there at 8:30, because you can't put all that stuff on and then drive it through the streets, because it'll all fall off before we ever get there. So you got to think about that.
I'm talking about a structure. I'm not talking about permanent, you know, temporary.
You and I will talk about that later.
We're going to build something.
But I also wanted to point out that the scholarship reception is next week, and so they're going to be sending out letters fairly soon, notifying people, so watch in your mailbox. And I hope certain people get scholarships in recognition of their academic achievement. That's going to be a very exciting day, and that is next week. And I agree with trustee Kellogg about Ernie Kell. Ernie Kell was a great leader in our city. He was a philanthropist to Long Beach City College, and he will be very deeply missed. And so I will close the meeting, but we're not closing because it is our honor to have Janay Hunn here from LBCCFA. Do you have something to say? Oh, my goodness. Okay, Karen Roberts. Karen Roberts, do you have something to say? Come on forward.
You've been here all this time.
Karen Roberts, president of CHI.
And, and don't forget about the closed session that we're going back to.
Yes, and don't, yes.
I thought you stayed this late because you wanted to say something, Janay. No?
She can read it.
I thought you had stayed this late with us because you wanted to address us, and you're just, you're just here to support.
No, she can...
I think she's being graceful.
She can read a room.
Yeah, exactly.
Good evening, President Superintendent Dr. Romali, welcome, and Board President Baxter, and Board of Trustees. Probably the biggest CHI news is that we ratified the collective bargaining agreement on May 17th. I want to thank Jean Durand and Diane Banks for working collegiately with our CHI negotiations team. We had to work through some very difficult language as we had to sort out all the sort of requirements for the new reemployment preference bill for part-time faculty. That will be, you know, a new thing, and so hopefully, you know, that will come along. We'll track that, see how that, that goes. But this wraps up our CHI contract until 2019, so we all get a little bit of a break here. We held a successful and fun social for the part-time faculty at the El Torito, and I want to thank those of you who, who came. Anne Marie Gable came in her position as interim president. Terry Long, Jenny Baxter, Jeff Kellogg, and Vivian Malauulu, thank you so much. It was great fun to see you there and to see you socializing with the part-time faculty. We, I'm sure we will have more in the future. We'll be having elections in June, and there are a few part-time faculty who are very interested in getting involved with CHI, so you'll be seeing some new faces, hopefully. I'm planning on staying involved, but not as president of CHI, but I'm not going anywhere. I'll still be here teaching, but I've been accepted into an internship program with California Teachers Association next year.
Oh, good for you.
So that will take up a great deal of my time. I'm very excited about that.
Congratulations. That's great.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenny. Finally, this is the time of the year when we try to get the word out to all part-time faculty about applying for unemployment or reduced employment benefits. We held one successful workshop last week. We'll be offering another one on Tuesday at noon on PCC campus in room DD 207. We've been sending notices out. But in 1989, the California Court of Appeals ruled that part-time faculty who are temporary instructors are eligible for unemployment if they have a teaching assignment that can be canceled for lack of funding, low enrollment, or other factors. So even though we sign a quote "contract," you know, which is a load sheet, it is always a tentative offer of employment. It's really important that we get this message out to part-time faculty. The key for us in California is the servici decision, and that is what allows us to apply for unemployment benefits during summer, so literally after the last day of the spring semester, and then again after the last day of the fall semester. And so, we try to get, you know, all the information out to the part-time faculty so that, you know, they're not stuck during the summer with no income or very little income, and we can give them all the information that they need. So if you can help spread the word about that, I'd really appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you, Karen. On trustee committee, trustee Zia and I are on the audit committee, and we've had one meeting so far with the auditors and with the finance team, and we'll be meeting again in December, December, no, November something, so we'll give you a better report then. This is an opportunity for board members to request future reports. Hearing none, I'll continue. And then, future reports already scheduled are the tentative budgets and the facilities' master plan. We are now going back into closed session, and when we are through with closed session, I will come out and report out, if there is anybody here left.
[laughing]
And, because last time there wasn't, that's why I say that. But again, congratulations, Dr. Romali, and we're off to a great start, and everybody have a wonderful end of the school year. And the next meeting will be, oops, June 27th at 4 o'clock closed session and open session at 5 o'clock. The meeting is not adjourned because we're going to close session.
In honor of Ernie Kell.
And, and in honor of Ernie Kell. Thank you. In memory of Ernie Kell.
Memory.
There's nothing to report.